11th, 2024. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you. I'd like to give notice that we did have an executive session via Zoom on the first of November and just prior to this meeting to discuss legal issues. And I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day. Because today, we salute all who have served and those who continue to serve. And if there's anyone here, thank you very much for your service. We're going to start off the meeting with several presentations. Our first presentation will be about the Radnor 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Adam?
Great. Thank you. There we go. Perfect. Thank you all, once again, for having me back to present on the draft of the Comprehensive Plan. As you know, there's a public draft available. If you all are looking for it, you can find it on radnor2035.com. Today, I'm going to be presenting the first of three parts. I will be back two more times to present the second and the third part. So, thank you very much for the opportunity today. For anybody who's interested in it in the room right now, you can hit the QR code if you are looking for the draft or looking to leave a comment. Today, I'm going to be going over the plan, talking a little bit about the public engagement process that created it, some top-level summaries of the trends and conditions, and then getting into the three sort of core elements of the plan that I'm going to be presenting today, which is environment and open space, sustainability, resiliency and infrastructure, and then parks, recreation and facilities. So, a quick overview. As a reminder, the Comprehensive Plan is aspirational. It looks 10 years out into the future and offers policy guidance to the township to direct its actions on how to achieve a community-driven vision. The plan is presented as a framework. There's a vision, a series of goals related to each of the topic areas, and then strategies and actions that can be implemented in order to achieve those goals and vision. As I said, I'm going to be talking about three of the parts today, three of the elements today, and we'll be talking about the subsequent elements in the next two presentations. A reminder that the Part Two is going to be happening on November 25th, but the current draft, which includes historic preservation, economic development and housing, is now available. If you did not get an email about it today, you should be getting it very shortly. And it's also, again, on Radnor 2035. And then on December 9th, I will be presenting the last three elements: mobility, institutions and land use. The next steps of all of this is we're ultimately going to be going through a formal adoption process where this gets sent to the Planning Commission, then goes out for county review. It's reviewed by the contiguous municipalities, and then you all will be voting on it, hopefully in late February, early March. So, this plan was developed over the course of about a year and a half. It started with a review of previous plans. So, we looked at your plans, the county's plans, state plans, plans by DVRPC. We went through an existing conditions and trends analysis, which I presented to all of you in a meeting very similar to this. There was extensive community and stakeholder engagement. We worked with staff. We did our own technical analysis, and we brought our own professional expertise to the development of this. If you're looking for any of the documents, if you're interested in those presentations, if you want to go back and read the summary of the reports, they're all on Radnor 2035 in the library section. One of the big questions that people frequently ask as we get to this phase of the planning process is, how is this plan implemented? It's really important to remember that this plan is not a legal mandate. It is a policy document, but it is implemented in a number of different ways. The first is through regulatory changes. So, you make updates to your zoning, your saldo, your environmental regulations, your stormwater ordinances, and that can be a very effective way of making these or sort of achieving the vision or the goals. You can invest in capital projects. So, that's either through municipal funding. Comprehensive plans are very important in going after grants. When you go to, for example, DEP or EPA and you say, hey, we would like some money, very frequently, they say, well, was there a community-driven plan that says that you should be doing this? And if you can point to your comprehensive plan and say, yes, we've got it in our plan, that's very effective in supporting those grant applications. And then also sort of with your partners with the county and SEPTA, DVRPC, PennDOT and those sort of entities. And then finally, through sort of partnerships and advocacy and further planning studies. But before I go any further, I want to talk, I want to hand it over a little bit to Bill to talk a little bit more about sort of this strategy within the township to implementing this.
Thank you, Adam. Just real quickly, as we discussed within the Steering Committee meetings and some of our administrative meetings as this project has moved along, the idea as we sit here today for implementation is, I mean, part of the excitement of having this plan and actually adopting elements within it, we'll be meeting with the Board of Commissioners, it seems like, spring-ish on an annual basis. It seems like the right time on the calendar. And at those meetings, it'll give the board an opportunity to identify the priorities within this plan that they would like to see achieved and start setting timeframes on when you'd like to see those. Spring is ideal because then we can start formulating budgets based on those priorities coming out of that meeting. And then what happens is, is year over year, we build upon that. And at the same time, we're working with Adam on developing some sort of tracking mechanism, dashboard or something that can live on the website and within our documents to show the community how we're doing on these different items. So, a lot still to be worked on and put together, but generically speaking, that's the actual implementation of these items.
Great. Thanks. And I would just say, that's very much in line with sort of best practices at implementing comprehensive plans. And the plan itself, you'll see, is very much presented recommendations forward. That was a conscious decision that we made to support implementation. So, just a little bit of a reminder of the engagement process here. It seems sort of surprising to think all the way back to when this all kicked off, but we were out there very, very much last summer with project websites and the e-blast and getting the social media out there, but also pushing out all of these paper materials. We were out there with bookmarks and flyers and posters. And we sent out 5,000 Everydoor Direct Mailers to addresses throughout the township. We were at pop-up events, so we were at the Unity in the Community events, the Pumpkin Patch. We were at a number of different events, talking with people and getting their input and thoughts about the future of Radnor. There was also a community survey where 500 people, more than 500 people participated, where more than 3,000 comments were submitted. And then there was also a post-workshop survey where 150 people participated. Really important on that last part, in that post-workshop survey, every proposed goal that's in this plan was supported or strongly supported by at least 65% of the respondents. We also had an in-person workshop that had 60 participants. It was two hours. It gave us an opportunity to really dive deep into a couple of really core issues. We met six times with the Steering Committee and just had numerous staff meetings along the way. And then finally, we had presentations to you all, presentations to the Planning Board, the Steering Committee, and all of our drafts and all of the presentations were made available on the website, and people had an opportunity to leave comments with us, and we made adjustments accordingly. So, I just wanted to summarize a couple of the big things that are relevant to this part that came out of that community engagement process. There was a lot of concern for flooding and stormwater management, something I don't think surprises all of you. There was concern about the loss of open space to new development, a lot of concern about the loss of trees, and expressed desire for sort of better maintenance of existing open space, a strong desire to protect natural resources and preserve that open space. One of the things that was very different from your last Comprehensive Plan is we heard a lot about sustainability and climate change and the importance of long-term planning and that impact, improving the trail connectivity, improving, excuse me, promoting environmental sustainability and better investing in infrastructure to prevent flooding. We did a trends and conditions analysis. I'm not going to go into the depths of all of that. If you're interested, the presentation that I gave, I believe, to all of you or to the Steering Committee is online. You can watch the video on radnor2035.com. A couple of just highlights here. The population in Radnor is increasing. It remains a community with highly educated people. You are having, you do have more older and younger residents than in 2000 and fewer residents in what's sort of that prime working age, age 25 to 54. And you are losing, over the past 20 years, younger and older single households. You're diversifying, so you've got more Asian and Spanish residents as a proportion of your population. And something that I think is really important to kind of keep in the back of your mind, it's often common to sort of think that nothing is changing, and especially in a stable community like Radnor. But since the last Comprehensive Plan, 75% of households have moved into their homes. So, they moved either within Radnor or they moved into Radnor or moved out of Radnor. So, there has been a fair amount of turnover or change in the community. In terms of households, you do have a strong family household composition, but it is really important to remember that only 33% of households are households with fam, or excuse me, families with children. So, nearly two-thirds of your households do not have children in them. Your households are getting wealthier, and your housing is getting more expensive, both absolutely in a sort of raw number and relative to your county and your neighbors. Some key findings that we came to as part of this that are relevant to Part One is is that your stormwater infrastructure and your sewer infrastructure is outdated. I know this is something you all are, all are very aware of. It's impacting your flood management, your sediment control, your waste management. You have done a very good job, and you continue to grow your public parks and open spaces. You have nearly four, or more than 400 acres of it. And that there has been a shift both locally and regionally towards promoting clean energy and sustainability, things that you're going to see reflected in the recommendations of this plan. So, now, I'm just going to give a quick overview. I know you all have copies of the planned document. I'm not going to dive into this in detail, but I did want to highlight a few things. So, there are five goals in the Environment and Open Space section, focusing on protection of existing resources, reducing pollution, addressing stormwater, expanding and maintaining open spaces, and addressing impervious surfaces. The strategies really focus on six topics here. So, that is investing in efforts to improve stormwater. You all are doing that, and there's a strong emphasis on continuing to do that and working with your partners to expand that. Maintaining that open space, permanently protecting some new key open spaces, environmentally sensitive areas. And one of the things that we hope this plan does is provide you a little bit of a strategy for thinking about where to be sort of buying or acquiring or protecting open spaces. It's something that we heard a lot of, is like, things come online and we just don't have any criteria to evaluate that, and we've given you some direction on where to look for that. Investing in infrastructure to reduce pollution, updating your ordinances, something that you're going to hear a lot of and see a lot of in this Comprehensive Plan, and continuing to work with your partners and build those partnerships to protect your, your open spaces. Some of the actions, and just as a point of nomenclature here, actions support strategies. Strategies achieve goals. So, as part of your action here is exploring additional options to accelerate the township's ability to implement its stormwater solutions. One of the things that I would just say, it was one of the top issues that we heard with stormwater. We know that you all have issued a bond. We know that you all are working on this. We just see it as something that we just heard over and over again, so continue to focus on that. We do think that is important, and this is related to that, is to conduct a stormwater study in collaboration with the DOT along Route 30. You're going to hear a lot about Wayne and Route 30 in this Comprehensive Plan, and this action is very much related to some of the other actions that we've recommended here. But one of the places when we asked people to drop a pin and say, hey, this needs to be improved, was Route 30 and were issues of stormwater. We strongly recommend that you fund the current plan to evaluate the township's aging sanitary, excuse me, sanitary sewer system. A little bit of a tongue twister there. Without a real strong assessment of what's going on there, it's very hard to understand what your next step should be. And finally, thinking about long-term funding and strategic actions in order to address the pollution reduction plan. You do have what is essentially an unfunded mandate from the state to address some pollution issues, and thinking about how you're going to fund that locally and some of the grants that may be available to help you with that is critical. One thing that I want to emphasize here is, on the right, is the, the greenways and wooded areas from the Greenways and Open Space Network Plan. It was a very good plan that was done several years ago, but I think it is a good document to be thinking about when you start to think about where you should be acquiring open spaces. So, these greenways and wooded areas are really important because they connect ecological systems. So, by maintaining and preserving these corridors, you do everything from allowing like little critters and birds and things to continue to travel. They don't have to cross over highways. They don't have to jump over developments in order to get there. But it also helps maintain and sustain the ecology of the plants in those areas. So, these are sort of critical locations to be thinking about open space acquisition. As you do so, one thing to be thinking about is to adopt an official map. This gives you leverage to start to think about acquiring open space in some of those areas. And likewise, one thing that we're going to be talking a lot about as we get into the housing and the land use section here is directing growth away from open spaces and environmentally sensitive areas. So, there's one thing that's sort of acquiring property or working with organizations and private property owners to protect it. The other thing is to direct growth away from that. We've got several strategies for doing that, especially in the housing section. This is a new section for all of you, Sustainability, Resilience and Infrastructure. This really came out of the public engagement process. It was a topic we heard of a lot. We heard about it a lot from a lot of the younger residents and a lot of the younger stakeholders. The focus here is on sustaining the community, reducing greenhouse gas emissions and the carbon footprint, mitigating the impacts of climate change, and maintaining a state of good repair, especially when it comes to your infrastructure. So, the strategy is focused around seven, or excuse me, the, the element is focused around seven strategies related to your water systems. We heard a lot about trees, and one thing that we wanted to do is put together a cohesive set of actions that would allow you to maintain, track and, and rebuild your tree canopy. We've got some strategies here that come from some of your other planning efforts to promote green energy, to install renewable energy systems on township property where feasible. It's something that communities are increasingly starting to do. Promoting sustainable, sustainable development, funding your capital improvements. This is something that we can talk a little bit more about in detail, but is going to be really critical as you move forward. And supporting those private efforts through partnerships. So, some key actions here, we know that you're working on, and we strongly encourage you to continue to develop your tree survey. One of the things that we have found through this process is, there's a lot of concern about trees and the loss of trees, but there's a little bit of lack of information about what's actually happening. There's some disagreements amongst the public sometimes about what's happening. Different people have different ideas about the state of the tree canopy, and until you get a really good sense of actually your, your canopy, the condition of it, and how it's growing or shrinking, you're going to have a really hard time having productive conversations. We're suggesting that you update your procurement guidelines. These are the things that you use to make capital investments to support the transition to 100% electric community. There is grant funding out there for this, and there's going to continue to be grant funding out there to support this effort, we think, long-term, again, over the course of 10, 20 years. Most municipalities are going to be making this transition. However, it is going to be really important that as you do this, you recognize that there are going to be things that right now, there are no viable electric alternatives or renewable alternatives. So, along with this, sort of looking at installing electric vehicle charging station at key municipal locations and developing, as I said, a standalone capital improvement program. You've got a lot of capital improvement projects. Thinking about how you're going to prioritize those projects and how you're going to systematically invest in them over time, how you're going to go after grant funding to support that, how you're going to work with your partners to invest in those capital projects is going to be really critical. And then finally, the Parks, Recreation and Facilities Plan. The focus here is really just on continuing to provide high-quality parks. You guys have great parks and facilities. It's something that we heard over and over again, residents love about living in Radnor Township. Making sure that those are accessible for all people is going to continue to be important. The strategies are very, very simple here. The last time you did a Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan was 1991. That means you probably got lots of people using your parks, recreations and facilities who were not born when your plan was last done. It's an important step to start thinking about what you're going to do with your facilities, and it's really outside of the scope of the Comprehensive Plan to go in the level of depth that's needed for something like that. So, really taking that on, that was actually a recommendation that was in your last Comprehensive Plan that was done in 2000. And then continuing to just support the recreational needs of all residents and ages. If anybody who is watching this or is interested in providing comments, like I said, you can go to radnor2035.com/comments. There's a link on the site. What you can do is you can do one of two things. You can download a PDF of the document. If you want to mark that up and just upload that onto the site, we'll take it and we'll grab it. But there's also opportunities for you to make comments section by section, sort of element by element. It's a form on there. You can write as much or as little as you like. We'll take all the comments that you have or are interested in sharing, and we'll continue to do that throughout this whole process. The next part that I'll be presenting, like I said, is on November 25th, and that third part will be December 9th. Our goal is going to continuously to be releasing a draft at least two weeks before we make this presentation. So, this draft was made public two weeks ago. This next presentation is two weeks, and today, we release the, the Part Two draft. Then there will be another draft that's out there for two weeks. I would strongly encourage you, if nothing else, so that you can support my enjoyment of the holidays, to try to get your comments in around December 9th, 10th, 11th, as much as possible, because our goal really is to turn this all around, get a final draft, and get you something ready to move forward through the adoption process at the very beginning of 2025. So, with that, thank you very much, and I'm here to, you know, answer any questions or provide any clarifications.
Thank you very much. That was concise and perfect. Any questions from Commissioners?
No, and I would just, as you have already said, try to get people to comment, so it will go straight to you rather than take a whole lot of public participation at this point.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Stick around for one of the agenda items.
Yep, I will. I will.
Our next presentation is from the Willow's Park Preserve. It's their biannual report regarding the progress of fundraising efforts and construction. Mr. Nord, welcome.
Thank you. Don't know where the slides are. I don't know where the slides are.
Sorry.
Which one is it?
We have on the agenda, right?
What's that?
So, we have PDF, you said, test our agenda. Is that right?
Yeah, should be.
All right. Sorry. Wasn't sure if we bring it up on the other end.
Thank you. Right there. Thank you.
Yeah, one second. I'll bring it up.
Okay. Sharon? Sherry? All right, there we go. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Will Nord. I am the proud Executive Director at the Willow's Park Preserve. We're happy to give our biannual presentation this evening. Hard to believe that I took this role on four years ago, and it's amazing to look back over the four years and see the progress that we've, that we've made. Those first couple of years, at least the first year, I remember these presentations. There was a lot of, a lot of really good, pointed questions on our financials, and it took, it took a little while to get started, especially during a pandemic. But, you know, again, looking back over, over the, over the four years and the progress that we've made, we're very proud of. Here's a slide that we showed, I believe, the last time we presented here, but I think it's important to remind everyone, all of you and the public, of who we are and why we're here. So, our, the mission of the Willow's Park Preserve is to revitalize the Willow's Mansion as an integral part of the Willow's Park and open it to the community as a welcoming and inclusive place for relaxation, connection, celebration and lifelong learning. We value the community inclusivity, open space, historical preservation, lifelong learning, health and wellness, arts and culture, and collaboration. And so, when we are physically making improvements to the Willow's Mansion, when we're looking to host programs and events at the Willow's Mansion, these are, these are what we're thinking about. We're thinking about our mission, and we're thinking about our core values as, as we continue on this journey. So, what's been going on at the WPP really since the last time we presented, which I believe was April or May, in terms of the physical improvements to the Willow's Mansion? Two pretty big projects have been, one has been completed, one is almost completed. But the exterior painting of the Willow's Mansion has been completed. It was completed earlier this summer. And then the kitchen restoration is, dare I say, days, a couple of weeks, a few weeks from being, from being completed. And that's really going to be a big step for us in terms of what we can do and provide at the Willow's Mansion for the community. Some other highlights, the Willow's Mansion since January 1st, 2024, has been used 138 times. So, again, when, when describing and talking about what our nonprofit is doing, sometimes we talk about, it's, it's two things that go hand in hand. We are, we are physically restoring and improving the Willow's Mansion, but we're doing that so the community can use it for, for a variety of reasons, and it's been used 138 times this year. So, those uses have included meetings and retreats and health and wellness classes, holiday events, photo shoots, weddings, fundraisers, educational lectures, tours, memorial receptions, music concerts and more. The space has been used by individual community members, local schools and universities, local businesses, garden clubs, Wayne Senior Center, Radnor School District and Radnor Parks and Recreation and more. Many of the programs that we, we offer, that the WPP hosts and puts on, many of them are free for the community, for all different ages, for all different programs. And I think it kind of goes to show you, it's working. What we set out to do a handful of years ago is, is, is working, and again, we're very proud of the progress. That, that And again, we're very proud of the progress that, that, that we're making. So with that, with that, with that progress and growth, often comes some challenges. It can be a kitchen restoration that isn't completed when we had hoped it to be complete. Or it can be a topic that has been brought up and we have discussed it a few times. Music coming from certain events that goes a lot further than, further towards our neighbors than we ever would have thought in, when we first started hosting some weddings at the, at the mansion. Based on conversations and recommendations both from Radnor Township and our neighbors, the WPP will be taking the, a few action steps in the immediate future. We've actually, in the last three weeks, had a really good, effective, productive conversation with Radnor Township. And we also had a really nice meeting with our neighbors, all within the last, last few weeks. So some, just wanted to share some immediate next steps that we're gonna take. We're, we're going to have Mondo Media, a media company that looks, looks at sound mitigation out. In fact, we actually met with another gentleman this morning that Radnor Township has been talking with, had him out as well. So we're having two experts in the, the, the sound, sound area out within the next two weeks to give us further information, collect data, and give us further information or recommendations on how we can, how we can help, help with these sound challenges. We have kept our tent up. We are done the wedding season, outside wedding season, and we've kept our tent up to run these tests the best that we can. We are also, we have procured some sound curtains. We've bought, purchased one section of sound curtains that we actually put up last week just to see the fit, the style. And then that is also an idea and a recommendation to put up some sound curtains for the 2025 season. We also recommended to hire an event manager that will be on site for all weddings. We have also, we have already come to a verbal agreement two weeks ago with a site manager for the 2025 season. And then in, in the continuing to collaborate with, with Radnor Township and our neighbors, again, we've had some really positive conversations, especially with our neighbors over the last couple of weeks, over the last couple of days. And we are gonna be meeting with them monthly, moving forward, not probably, not forever, but moving forward before we all, so we can all kind of come together, continue to come together and try to solve this music challenge that has been going on. So again, just a few photos of, of some events and programs that we've had over the last three, four, or five months. Again, this is what it's all about, right? We are trying to physically restore, improve the Willow's Mansion so we can invite the community to use it. It's a, it's an amazing community asset, and everyone should be able to enjoy it. And we're trying, or continuing to work hard to try to do our part to make that happen. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Krista to go over some of the financials. So come on. So when you're ready, you can just.
The numbers that we're sharing with you are through.
You're gonna have to go to the mic, yeah, sorry. You would think I've never done this before. The numbers that I'm gonna share with you are through three quarters. That's September 2024 and compared with the year prior. As you can see, we've done well on, you know, both, these are expenses. I wanted to show revenue first. Revenue has increased both in contributions and our program revenue, which includes what we earn from the private events. And I think, you know, I'm not gonna read the numbers to you. Just a few things I wanted to stress is that those numbers are through September, so they don't include income earned at our fall fundraiser. We raised over 20,000 at the fall fundraiser, very successful. It also doesn't include what we call deferred revenue. I've explained that before. Those are typically deposits collected for future events. We don't record the revenue until the event has actually occurred. I think the other point I'd want to make about this chart is how important the contributions continue to be. It's great that we're doing well with our private events. That helps us ensure the stability of the organization. But the contributions allow us to take on the projects. We wouldn't have been able to do the kitchen renovation without, you know, raising the funds that we did through the contributions. And that number, 74,000, that includes over 100 different, what I call giving units, meaning that's not one large donor that came in with that check. Over 100 contributions, small and large, small from $25 to a $20,000 contribution. So it spans the gamut. And then on the expense side, expenses have been relatively stable. There's always ebbs and flows depending on the projects that we're going to do. And certain projects like those listed get capitalized. So those expense numbers actually include amortized expenses. From a cash flow standpoint, though, you know, we're doing really well. We're doing really well both on a cash flow standpoint and even on an income accrual basis. I think, Jake, last year, this time, or about this time, I was presenting a chart. And for comparison, right now through September, net income for the WPP is positive 31,000. This time last year, it was negative 70. We did not have cash flow issues, but we were still amortizing expenses like the roof restoration. So on paper, we were showing a loss. We're actually showing positive net income of, of 31,000. So underscoring the message that we're financially strong and stable, our revenue through September grew 70%. And, you know, we continue to try to figure out what projects we can fund. We're going through that effort right now to prioritize projects for the coming year. Certainly, private events continue to be very important to our sustainability. And I did want to comment, because I heard this question come up at previous Board of Commissioner meetings that I personally was not attending. The reason for the tent and the reason for that space, it was always envisioned that our private events would be at that space. We're creating a very different kind of experience because we can only do 25 weddings. There was a time when weddings and events were inside, but they, there were a lot of them. They were happening every weekend. We get 25. And what we've heard, and what we heard from our partner Peachtree, who knows this business, is that people value wanting to be together. So the reason for the tent and having the events at that space, it, it wasn't COVID, although certainly that, I can't say that, you know, didn't factor in at all. But it was primarily so that we could offer something that we could command a premium for. You know, with only 25 events, we have to maximize the revenue we get from those events. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Any commissioner comments, questions? Seems like everybody's satisfied. Commissioner Abel.
Appreciate the breakdown and congratulations on the numbers. They, they are definitely better than the last presentation. But, you know, it's, it is 31,000. And I, I think I saw on there, you're gonna hire a new staffer. So does that kind of just wipe out that, that margin?
It won't, no, it won't wipe it out. It'll certainly impact it. It is a zero-sum game.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, what happens over, over the year if, like, an emergency comes up and there needs to be repair or, you know, something that's not on the list? Where does that funding come from?
Well, I think we have enough in our bank accounts. You know, if you look at our current assets, which I think that, that was on a prior chart, we have enough to cover most of, and we, we have been. I mean, just this year, I've spent, you know, I, I, we have spent over 7,000 in HVAC repairs. You know, we already spent in this year, and that wasn't on the budget. We spent over 13,000 to try to address the sound issues. We spent over $7,000 on a new sound system that we hoped would help. We spent over $4,000 hiring a sound engineer to be on-site at these events. So that wasn't planned. So we can certainly handle these kinds of unexpected expenses that come up. The board did approve a reg, a resolution to apply to M&amp;T Bank for a line of credit. And I actually was hoping that that was wrapped up today. I called the contact I'd been working with, and then surprised, it's Veterans Day, the banks are closed. But last week, I got an email saying that I should be getting a term sheet at any point. You know, it's coming out of the underwriters. We're a very unique organization. So it, you know, we don't easily fit in the category of institutions that banks can rubber stamp. But I do expect that next time I'm in front of you, we will have secured a line of credit that will help us. 90, 90,000 is what we've applied for.
As part of that original lease in, in 2019, Exhibit A listed a whole laundry list of, of items that were on, that were marked as improvements. Like how, I mean, what percentage of those projects do you think you've accomplished in, in five years?
I'm not prepared to give you a percent. I haven't done the math of the ones we've checked off and the ones that were on the list. But we have tackled quite a few that were on the list. I think Will showed some of those. If you're asking what our near-term priorities are, it's probably, you know, non-sexy stuff, infrastructure-oriented things. We have an aging HVAC system. We spend a lot of money each year on unexpected repairs. So the HVAC system, the boilers, those are things that we hope to tackle next year. We have to see how the end-of-year fundraising goes with that. And then we, you can expect we'll be coming back to you, probably after the first of the year, with a request for funding. We'd like lighting down the driveway for a safety issue. We'd like to see that. And then I know the paving project is going to happen next year in 2025. I'm not sure what the entire scope is, but we'd actually like to see the paving include the fountain courtyard area and, and the wishing well, well circle. So those are probably the most immediate things that we have a line of sight to.
Again, not, not a sexy item, but something that we've talked about in the past is the, the wall, the entryway into the park. Is that something that you guys are still putting as a priority?
I would say that's not a priority for us compared to, you know, HVAC system and also sealing the basement for, for water. That's, you know, those are probably the more immediate priorities. If we, if somehow, you know, we got a windfall, large funding through a grant or a donor, then that obviously opens up the aperture of things we can consider. But as you've seen now, I, I've been in this role going on five years. It's, we do a little bit, you know, it's incremental progress, and we're committing to continuing to make that incremental progress.
Okay. And with the kitchen, is, was that all funded through the grant you received?
No, a lot of that. So the total kitchen project, the estimate was 211,000. And the grant, we're expecting that'll cover 89,500. We're actually, right now, in the process of submitting for reimbursement through the grant. The delta was covered by the WPP.
Now, as part of that project, was there any asbestos remediation?
No, that happened more with the roof restoration.
But, but the asbestos is all throughout the house, correct?
You know, I'm gonna have to, I'm, I'm not the facilities person, and Howard is sick tonight, so he's not here. But I, I will say that the kitchen renovation has been done in close coordination with the township. And the township has been now multiple times to inspect our progress. So I'm sure if there was an unmitigated issue, that would have surfaced.
Okay, and I think, like, if you do a project in the basement, there, my recollection, my, my remembrance of, of the conversation with the, the engineering company that did the report was there were asbestos issues, definitely in the basement. I think the previous WPP addressed the third floor, but.
I think we addressed more than the third floor. I was coming in, you know, kind of in transitional period, previous treasurer was outgoing. I know that a lot of money was, was spent on that, and more than just the, the third floor, I believe.
Well, that's, that's my point, is it's gonna be costly if, if we need to do more asbestos remediation in that house.
Well, we didn't, whatever was required for the kitchen renovation was done. I mean, the, the plans were approved by the township. You know, so if there was any remediation required, that was done, that was part of the project plan. I can't tell you, I, you know, what, if anything else is required for sealing, sealing off the basement for, for water damage. Again, I have to defer to Howard.
Okay. And are you the appropriate person to talk to about the noise issue?
I can certainly, I, I'm part of the conversations, I would say.
Okay, well, I, and I appreciate the partnership between the WPP, the neighbors, and the township. You know, a lot of people in the community don't realize, you know, this is a two-year effort. And, and all the sides have worked well together to try to find a solution to this problem. So, so this next step with Mondo, has Mondo been out to the, the park before? One time?
Yeah.
What, what did they do that one time?
They, they came out a year ago to give us a proposal for the sound system.
Okay, so, so that's all they did? They just came out and, and wrote us a proposal for?
Yeah.
Two different sound systems, one?
No, one, just.
Less expensive, one, one more expensive?
No, no, we didn't, we didn't go with them. We didn't purchase a sound system from them because their proposal took too long. But we're gonna have them back out. You know, the way we're looking at it, and again, conversations with the township and our neighbors, to have them back out, to have a gentleman named Scott Nye out, who was there this morning, to collect data and to figure it, as you all know, it's this really unique situation, how the sound is traveling, where you can come in the entrance of the park when a wedding's going on and a band or DJ's playing, and you can't hear music. You can go to the entrance of the neighborhood and not hear anything, but you go all the way up, and the way it's traveling is really unique. So we need to bring in these, you know, some experts.
Which is why I would ask, why are we, why are we investing in sound curtains before we have a report from the, the experts? Like, why not wait till, till Mondo gives us the report, tells us what they think the issue is and how to address it, instead of going in and assuming this is gonna fix the problem when we could be wasting money if they say the curtains aren't gonna do anything?
Right, so our, our hope and our plan is to have both, both people in in the next two weeks while the tent is still up. We only purchased, purchased one section of tent for, or sorry, one section of curtain so far, just to, to have a prototype, see if it can hang, see what it looks like. And so we'll hold on purchasing all the other curtains until we get a definitive answer, whether it's worth it or not.
Okay. So we think Mondo is going to turn a report back over to the WPP within a month?
We, we would, we would hope as soon as possible. They, they know, and we've expressed the urgency to get, turn around this, these recommendations as soon as possible.
And we'll have testing, we'll, we'll conduct testing before the end of the year?
We're hopeful to conduct some testing in the next two weeks while the tent is still up.
Okay, but that's gonna be without Mondo's recommendations?
So the, the, the sound testing, we hope to bring Mondo in and Scott Nye in, two different people, to bring, to actually run some music tests while the, the tent is still up in the next two weeks.
Okay. And then worst-case scenario, this doesn't solve the issue, what, what's our next step?
It's a great question. It's a good question, and I don't know if I have the answer to that. You know, we, you know, Krista explained, and, and we've talked about the, the experience that we're giving clients right now, guests right now, that host their wedding there. We, we've explained how important this revenue is to our nonprofit and to continue the work that we're doing. You know, I, we have, as you've probably heard, with the township and with our neighbors, we've discussed everything, all possibilities. And so I think that's one of the reasons why, you know, we're getting along and we're having some good conversations is because we're all very open-minded to hearing different ideas and different situations. So, you know, we wanna take these next steps and then come back together. And if, if they, if they don't work, come up with, with the next steps, the next plan.
Okay, and, and I hope this works out, but.
Yeah.
To, to your point. To your point, the lease was passed in 2019. I think it's Section 3 has language and paraphrasing, but, you know, the sound isn't supposed to disturb the rest of the park or the neighbors. If we can't find a solution, are we able to go back into the house?
Well, I'll just share maybe my opinions. That section in the lease, when it was originally constructed, because we did talk to our council, it was, the context of the discussions that were being had at that time were around construction. So it doesn't, you know, there's a different section in the lease that deals with private events, you know, but be that as it may, we want to solve the problem. It's worded vaguely enough that disturbance could mean the noise ordinance, you know, without some specific definition of what disturbance could be, it would be reasonable to fall back on the noise ordinance. So there's a lot of, you know, we never wanna get to the place where we're sitting there, you know, in a court, you know, trying to discern the legalese of the lease agreement. That's not where we wanna be. We wanna find a solution. It's been suggested, well, could we move music inside? Everything is an option, but it has an impact. And in discussing this with our partner, Peachtree, and just based on anecdotal feedback that we've gotten from people that actually were at weddings when that's how it was, it'll have an impact. It'll have a real material impact on the appeal of the venue and the ability to sell the venue. Peachtree has us positioned as sort of their high-end venue. There is another venue that they have, Portico, where the music does move inside, but the distance between where people are having their dinner and where the dancing is, is not as far as where our tent is and where the solarium is. You know, people that have had their events there bef, you know, that have participated in events before where that was the case say, "It wasn't great." You know, the dancers suddenly got separated from the non-dancers. And having been at many of these events myself over the summer with Howard, just to be there to monitor, to observe, what, you know, everybody's together having dinner, and it would be jarring, this very hard, okay, suddenly, everybody pivot, go inside, because there's the father of the, you know, the bride's speech, then there's the first dance, and then some dancing starts, and people are still, they're having dessert, desserts being served, ports being served. And at this other venue I just mentioned, Peachtree says that, how they market, they're very good at what they do and how they segment their market. That market is, they call it the house party vibe. What they market the Willows as is a very different kind of client experience, more their high-end client experience. So for us-
I hate to interrupt, but I think this might be a conversation best had with all of the players involved. You don't have any neighbors here, it's just you guys. Do you have any other pertinent questions? Because I think we're sort of beating the sound thing.
Yeah. I just, just one final comment on our end. Like, whatever we decide to do as we continue to move forward, we have every, the WPP has every expectation to continue to work with the township and our neighbors, not to go off and do our own thing. So just, I wanna make sure that's clear.
Appreciate that. And then, on the, on the new staff member that will, I think in your slide it says will be there for the 25 large events?
Mm-hmm.
Or will it just be the weddings? Or 25 large events are the weddings?
Yeah.
Well, they're not just the weddings, sometimes they're a bar mitzvah, but the 25 large events, yes.
So the staff member will be there for all the large events?
That is the plan. And of course, you know, somebody calls in sick, or he, right now, the candidate is a he, but if they call in sick, we obviously have to have a backup plan, which sometimes, you know, could be a board member. But that is the plan, that they're there for all the events.
So the noise issue with the personal cellphone on the stereo-
Yeah. That was an aberration. That was supposed to be, it was a small event, very small number of people. We were told it was just, it was a string quartet out on the terrace, and somebody pulled out a Bluetooth speaker and put music on the terrace. And the Peachtree staff should have intervened. We have spoken to the CEO of Peachtree, President of Peachtree, and he was surprised and disappointed by the answer that was given when somebody showed up, I think the police showed up, to ask, you know, who's in charge, turn this down. So I, I think that was an aberration that should not happen again.
But, but there may be a-
Guys, has anyone from this board contacted you about this issue in the past, any of the seven of us?
No.
You haven't had any direct conversations with board members in the past about this?
No.
Is there any reason why you would be unwilling to do so in the future if someone gave you a phone call about this?
Of course, absolutely. Always on this and any issue.
Okay, so I'll just continue. So if this does happen again, the staff member may need to be there for all outside events, correct?
Well, we're confident that-
All events?
If this happened again-
They're happening at smaller events.
So just, our contract with Peachtree, we authorize them to be an agent of the WPP. And I think initially, you know, question, why haven't we had an event manager before? Because our contract actually says, as an agent of the WPP, they will enforce our rules, regulations. And so we thought that was sufficient, and then we supplemented that with a sound engineer. But it's become very clear to us, the scope of things we need this person to do is so much bigger than what is reasonable to expect Peachtree to do, like, that person probably needs to drive up to Inverary and be taking decibel readings. You know, we can't imagine, expect the Peachtree, you know, event manager to do that. And that's why we're going to have this onsite event manager.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Any further commissioner questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A lot of useful information. All right, we're gonna move on to our initial public participation. If you're here to speak to any of the items that are on the agenda, it would be great if you could hold your participation until then. But if you wanna get up now, anybody who comes up has five minutes. You need to give your name and street or affiliation, and have at it.
Hello, everyone. I'm Hallie Ammons. I'm Assistant Director for Government and Community Relations at Villanova University. And I'm here this evening, as we all know, Election Day was last week. And I'm here this evening to recognize and thank the Board of Commissioners for its support during the municipal redistricting process, which resulted in the consolidation of Villanova's main campus into two wards and established a polling place for precincts 22 and 73 at the Mullen Center. Over 1,800 voters, many of whom voted for the very first time, cast their ballots on campus on Tuesday. And we were also delighted to see so many of our neighbors, and we are looking forward to continuing to serve our community in this new capacity. I'd also like to recognize the poll workers and our judges of election, who, many of whom are Radnor residents as well, for expertly managing a new polling place that had extremely high turnout on that day. Their patience, knowledge, and commitment were essential to the day's success. And finally, again, thank you to the board for all your support throughout this process. Your commitment to expanding voter access reflects a dedication to fostering active participation in our democratic process. We are grateful for your partnership in this endeavor, which we hope will have a lasting positive impact on our campus and surrounding community. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. It was wonderful to be there and see the excitement of all the students, so it was great.
It was, it was great to see you and see other commissioners that day as well, so it was a good day. Looking forward to doing it again. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sarah Pillen, 29 Garrett Avenue. Several times, the WPP has come to present what they're doing, and on more than one occasion, it's been asked, what was the fee that Will Norre is paid as the executive director? So I went to ProPublica, which is publicly, public knowledge, anyone can go there, and his salary for 2023 was $91,920. So a great deal of their expense is to pay Will. I'm concerned that now they're gonna hire a second person at these events, which could be as many as 138 events, which is what they said. So I just want that out in the public realm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public participation at this point? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any commissioner or member of the public would like to pull? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And a second? All right, all in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. All right. Let's move on to the business agenda. Our first item A is a caucus-only preliminary slash final minor subdivision plan for 50 to 54 Farriston Road, which is owned, I believe, by Valley Forge Military Academy. It's a two-lot subdivision with two existing residential dwellings. Hello, welcome.
Hello. Good evening. Bill Deon here on behalf of Valley Forge Military Academy. We are here this evening for a subdivision of what is referred to as 50 and 54 Farriston Road. Might create some confusion, because if you drive out there, it's actually labeled as 12 and 16 Farriston Road. There was some confusion over the addressing. We've clarified that with the township, and moving forward, we are going to classify these two parcels as 50 and 54 Farriston Road. The property is zoned R2 residential. It's currently improved with two homes. The plan is to subdivide it so that each home sits on its own individual lot. There are two review letters that we received from the township consultants. They're fairly straightforward. One is dated October 29, 2024, from Gannett Fleming, and the other is dated September 18, 2024, from Gilmore and Associates. I can go through the review letters if there's any questions. It's only a couple of clarifications from our standpoint, but otherwise, it's fairly straightforward.
Anyone have any question? I mean, you could summarize, would be good.
Sure. Really, the only thing is, there's a couple waivers that we have on the plans with regard to setting aside the adequate right-of-way on Farriston Road. We had set aside the right-of-way that was, the cartway that's out there today on Radnor Road. We agreed with the planning commission to not go to the ultimate right-of-way, but to grant an easement for the existing sidewalk out there. And on Eagle Road, we would offer it to dedication to Pendott, but to the ultimate right-of-way, but we don't think that will ever happen. And I think that was pretty much it. We provided some existing features on a plan. I think there's some question if we have to provide some additional information or if a waiver is in order, but I'd probably defer to Steve on that one if we need additional information or actually ask for a waiver.
Mr. Norrisini?
So, Commissioner, this is pretty basic. It's just a line on a piece of paper. The waivers they're requesting are the very common ones that we hear from most applicants on the mapping requirements. We don't see the need, they're existing, we don't see the need for the additional items, as noted.
Thank you. Commissioner Larkin?
Totally irrelevant to the question, and obviously, today, we're not voting on anything, but to get out ahead of it and kind of give the neighborhood some idea of what's going on, what's the plan for these two sites, if you know?
The one would stay in ownership, the one on the corner would stay in ownership of Valley Forge Military Academy. The second one is likely a demolition and sale.
So you, I mean, ultimately, you're tearing down a house and you're building a new one?
Yes. And nothing's consummated, but that is what's envisioned.
Okay. Do you know if there is a end date for the parceling off of the campus?
I'm sorry, a date of for what?
An end date for the parceling off? So, I mean, Valley Forge sold off the large lot in the middle, and it sold off the large lot that's slightly to the north, and it sold off a big piece to bring in the retirement community, and now it looks like it's selling off the smaller lot to the south. Is there anything more in the hopper that you're aware of?
No, I mean, Valley Forge is always looking to, at its assets and evaluating them, and right now, this is the only one that is on the table.
Okay.
I have one quick question. It's just something that didn't make any sense to me when I was looking through the packet. The Delaware County Planning Commission form-
Yes.
When I look at it, it asks me on the worksheet for subdivision, the number of new lots from subdivision, $10 each residential, $50 each commercial, and you have 30 in there. Sounds like three lots to me.
If I, all I can say is it's probably an error, because there's only two lots being created. Maybe a-
I could comment on that. So the issue with that, there's three lots really involved, and there's two new being created. The two lots that you see, the two houses there, was one single lot. It's all part of the same tax parcel across the street with the entire Valley Forge subdevelopment. So they're all basically one tax parcel. That tax parcel goes across the street, which, so basically, we're cutting off, creating two new tax parcels outside of the Valley Forge tax ID.
So Valley Forge itself, or the academy itself, is the third?
Correct.
Presumably. Thank you. Any further commissioner questions or comments? No? Thank you very much.
Oh, no, thank you.
And we'll be seeing you again.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have a hearing regarding the inter-municipal transfer of a liquor license to 193 to 195 East Lancaster Avenue for Nature's Vin. Is that how you say it?
Yes.
Excellent.
Perfect.
And you are the owner?
I am.
Wonderful. Ms. Parmar?
Ragini, yes.
Ragini, nice to see you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Cam Butera. I represent Nature's Vin. I'm just gonna ask some basic questions, high-level questions, and then if there's, if there's a question, I understand, if there are questions or anything like that from the board or from the public, then I hope I can answer them. We can get them answered ahead of time, but like I said, if there's others, then we'll do with it there. So you've already stated your name. Can you tell us what you do?
Yeah, so I'm currently self-employed, but I'm spending a huge chunk of my time getting Nature's Vin up and running.
And what is Nature's Vin?
Nature's Vin LLC is the entity that I created to start my new venture.
And what's it going to be?
It's a wine bar and boutique shop that'll be in Wayne.
Are there any others currently existing?
No.
This will be a restaurant associated with this venture?
Yes. It won't be a big restaurant. It was outlined, what I'm intending to do in the business plan, that was an exhibit with the application, but food will be available.
And the business will be located at?
193-195 East Lancaster Avenue in Wayne, where Cohen's Flowers used to be located.
And what will the development look like? Do you have a plan?
Yeah, so in the business plan, also, there is an exhibit of the floor plan. We intend to, before my fit out of Nature's Vin, come back with more detailed plans. As far as the exterior, we're working to get in front of the design review board mid-December.
And describe the concept of what your, what this venture is going to be.
I'd love to. So again, wine bar and boutique shop. We're gonna be focused on natural wines, so naturally encompassing, biodynamic, and organic, really focusing on sustainability and how it impacts your, natural wines, how they positively can be a great health alternative for our community. Also driving inclusion in the wine industry. We're gonna be focused on women farmers, women ownership, and women winemakers.
Okay. And this will be a restaurant. So what type of food do you anticipate serving?
So small plates, charcuterie boards, cheese boards, chocolates, anything that appears nicely to really exemplify the wines, showcase them.
At price points, roughly?
Yeah, I mean, average for a glass of wine will be anything between 12 to $20. Bottles could be anywhere from 20 to 60, even up. It depends on the region and the type of wine. I did outline some pricing in the business plan as well for your review.
And the name of the business will be?
Nature's Vin.
About how prox, about how big will this premises be?
It'll be just over 1,500 square feet, close to 1,600.
And obviously, alcohol will be part of this venture.
Yes, yep.
Would you be able to operate this concept without a liquor license?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't work without one.
Well, this- Will this be a nightclub or anything like that?
No nightclub.
Will there be dancing or anything like that?
No dancing.
About how big is the, is the building, do you know? The first floor?
It'll, it's, it's, it's just about close to 1,700 between the two sides, because there's two, if you look at the floor plan, one side, Cohen's Flowers had two pots, and I took both of them for this wine bar.
Okay. Will you be hosting music or anything like that?
So occasionally, there may be an acoustic guitar player, but besides that, no.
What will the hours of operation be?
So closed Sundays and Mondays, open Tuesdays through Saturdays from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and then closed or with limited hours on holidays.
And how will you treat the service of alcohol?
So we're going to be taking the service of alcohol very seriously with appropriate training for all staff. Also, this is not going to be a bar where people are hanging out and drinking, or what you would consider kind of a traditional bar. This is more of a tasting room and education hub to really understand the wines, understand the storytelling behind these winemakers, and really, you know, bring in winemakers to speak to the community as well.
And will you be selling wine for all premise consumption?
Yes.
Okay. The, about how many employees do you expect to have?
So altogether, sorry about that, altogether roughly 15, inclusive of full-time and part-time staff.
And will all the employees be ramp trained?
Yes, they'll all be ramp trained.
And ramping responsible alcohol management program, right?
Yes.
Okay. And again, will the manager have any special training?
Yeah, again, ramp certified. Also, we'll have a full-time onsite sommelier who will also train the staff on the presentation of wine, the pairings of wine, and so forth, and then any other required human resources, compliance, health department, any of that related training will also be given to all staff and to management especially.
Okay. Will Nature's Vin adversely affect the health, safety, welfare, peace, or morals of Radnor Township?
No, and I'm also resident of Radnor Township, so I'm invested as well.
All right, good. And will it provide an economic development for Radnor Township?
Yes.
Can you tell us how?
Sure. Three ways. I mean, we'll be providing jobs within Radnor Township. Also, I spoke to driving more inclusion for women in the wine industry, but also want to do that with women-owned businesses in our local community, and in turn, that also helps our economic development. And then also, there's just been some vacancies in that area, and I believe, actually, no, I know, we're bringing something very unique to the customers and to the community of Radnor.
And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. You have a question? Yeah, any commissioner questions? Commissioner Mulrooney?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, it's not that pertinent, where is this liquor license coming from?
I think Upper Darby Borough.
Upper Darby?
Yeah.
And just looking through your business plan, the wine clu, like the membership portion of that, can you just speak to that?
Yeah, the wine club membership will be the ability, so there's on-premise, right, but also your ability to take wine home as well. So we'll feature wines of these women winemakers, also teach our customers how to pair them with food that they might have for dinner. If they come in, they'll have discounts for being on-premise and enjoying the wines. They'll get exclusive invitation to events as well, and also have a discount if they want to. I already had somebody in my own neighborhood say, hey, we want to bring our book club meeting in there, and so, and things like that. So they'll get some exclusives with the wine membership. I hope that was helpful.
Absolutely, thanks. So then my final question is, wine service on-site, but also purchase, you know, like as if you walk into a package store, right? You can buy a bottle off the shelf.
Up to three liters can be sold.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other alcoholic beverages other than wine on the premises?
No.
Okay. And will you be assuring that the entrance and the, I saw you had two restrooms, which I believe you did say were ADA accessible?
Correct.
Will the entrance be as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that, because I can't remember how, if Cowans had a step or a ramp or a...
No, it's straight in.
Straight in.
Yep, and we're actually replacing the doors on both the bar and the boutique side, and they're going to be wider.
Okay, so no stairs at all?
No.
Perfect. And then this one's just for my own curiosity. What does biodynamic wine mean? I mean, I knew what the other, I know what bio means and dynamic means, but I don't know that term.
Yeah, it's actually the way that you farm, and so it's sustainable efforts in farming that produce organic grapes, but if you add any type of preservatives or any toxins to those organic grapes, they're no longer natural. So they're actually three distinct categories.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's very helpful. Any further questions or comments?
Real quickly, considering this probably is going to go your way, what is your projected opening for this?
Spring.
Spring, got it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Larkin?
That was going to be my question. I also wanted to know when I could go.
I love that.
Careful, they're going to want early reservations. Commissioner Agnew, did you have a question? No, I thought I saw your light on. Excellent. Mr. Rice, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, just, just one question. Everything you've just said is, said is true and correct.
Yes.
There's 38, I believe, 38 seats in the, in the store?
Yes.
All right. I have been communicating with council for the applicant, and there's some conditions that I did send to the applicant and to the board, and if I could just, I'll go through these. I know some of them we, we discussed earlier. The, because what has to happen is they need a written resolution to take to the PLCB, and if the board votes to approve this with the conditions, then I would put that in the form of a resolution, and that would go along with the application. So the conditions that, that have been discussed is, first one had to do with outdoor seating. I think that the outdoor seating would be permitted in accordance with our current regulations for outdoor seating. So that would be up to Kevin Kachansky and the zoning department in terms of outdoor seating. I know there's none proposed at this time, but in the future...
None proposed at this time.
That's how that would go. Number two was no indoor/outdoor amplified or live music, no floor shows or live entertainment, except instrumental music or music on a stereo system. Three was that the applicant would have to comply with the terms and conditions of the PLCB for the transfer. Four, applicant would have to submit the building renovation plans, and we have floor plans that have been submitted with the application to the township, to the community development department, and then comply with whatever building and zoning requirements would be there. And number five is something that's been attached to, we've had a half a dozen of these in the last five years, liquor license transfers, that the applicant obtained written approval of this board prior to any proposed transfer of this license to some other location within the township. So they're the, they're the conditions. I don't know if the board has any questions about any of the conditions or anything to add on to that, but they would be put into the form of a written resolution.
So just to make clear, because you had mentioned this, you can have acoustic music, not, it can't be amplified, but you could have, like you said, a guitarist or something like that. You can do that.
Yes.
Because, did you buy the whole building? Do you own the building?
I'm on the other side as well. I'm a minor investor in the building.
In the building, so are there residences upstairs?
There's two apartments on the second, so it's a retail storefront and two residential apartments.
That's staying that way? Is that the deal?
Sorry?
That's staying that way?
Yes.
And are you redoing the facade and all that?
Not really redoing it, cleaning it up, and there'll be some signage as well, but again, we're going to come to, for the, in front of the design review board.
Great. Thank you.
Any further commissioner questions or comments? All right. Then I am going to make a motion that we authorize Mr. Rice to prepare a resolution as amended with the conditions regarding the intermunicipal transfer of this liquor license. All in favor? No, no, sorry. Do I have a, do I have a second? Thank you.
Are you proposing that we come back and do a resolution at a later date?
Well, he's got to write the resolution.
No, no, I would, what would happen if the board approves this, then I would put the approval in the form of a written resolution that they can take to the PLCB.
So it would be just approved as amended?
Yes.
That's what I said.
Okay, so now coming back at a later date?
No.
Got it.
So this is...
We're just authorizing him to write it, and then...
Right.
That's, that's your only crack at it. So if you have more comments? Now would be the time.
Don't want to do it again.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to this authorizing John Rice to prepare the resolution as amended with the conditions. All in favor? It's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Welcome to the third ward.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going, moving on to item C, Ordinance 2024-08, adoption, authorizing the Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township to select and appropriate by eminent domain certain real estate in Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania for municipal parking. I am going to make a motion to continue this until 12:09:24. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Mulrooney. Is there any comment or...
No, I, I mean, I would just briefly comment for those who are paying very closely, close attention, that there are ongoing discussions between the township and the church, so we would like, I would, I'm going to vote yes, because I would like to see those continue before we take any official action.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on this motion to continue. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Item D is Resolution 2024-131, authorization to award the township's share of the supplemental services portion for the Wayne Master Plan to FHI Studio in the amount of $99,475 to be funded as a part of the 2025 budget in the general fund, noting that the grant proportion of the master plan is being administered and paid for by the DVR BC directly. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Norsini, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. So as you had noted, the township received a grant and was awarded a grant for the Wayne Master Plan, and that's being done through by FHI Studios, Adam Texa. We're very happy about that. There is more that needs to be done. So this is where the supplemental part of the project comes in, being business attraction and development, business attraction and retention, and parking. So what's before you tonight is basically to add those two items and make this a seamless plan headed by Adam Texa and FHI Studios, even though parts funded by the grant and part would be funded by the board, and that would be the Wayne Master Plan in its totality. So maybe a little confusing in thought, but really what it means is we will have a full Wayne Master Plan. It will be cohesive because it will all be through FHI Studios, and that's what we're asking to award tonight.
Thank you for the explanation there. All right. Any commissioner questions? Comments? Adam, do you have any questions or comments? I hope you don't have questions, but you might have a few comments.
No questions, just thank you very much for the opportunity for this. We are really excited to get started on this once the comprehensive plan wraps up. To Steve's comment, this is going to feel like a single planning effort. We just have sort of two pots of money here that we're going to be drawing on, and I'll be working very closely with Steve to make sure that all the administrative parts move forward, but we're very excited to be sort of kicking this off really at the beginning of next year. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it's really important that Wayne gets a good master plan, and we appreciate your input.
Absolutely, and it's great to see you already implementing the, the comprehensive plan, which is really exciting. So thank you.
Yeah, it's a first step. Thank you. All right, so we, I'm going to, any other comments here from commissioners? Any public participation on this? No. All right, so on Resolution 2024-131, I'm going to call a vote. I'll go slowly and call a vote. No, all in favor, say aye. It's unanimous with Commissioner Mulrooney rushing to the, yeah, to the DS. All right, item five is going to be the budget for 2025, discussion and direction on outstanding funding items not included in the township manager's recommended budget. Mr. White, you want to start us up?
I will love to. If the technology's working here. That's a good sign. That's a better sign. All right. So as the agenda topic describes what the, the goal of this presentation and discussion tonight is, if you recall back at the October 14th presentation, there were a handful of items that were outside of what was incorporated in the base budget, and what we're looking for tonight is any discussion and direction the board might have on moving forward with those items ahead of having an ordinance on at the next Board of Commissioner meeting that would start the process for adopting not only the budget, but implementing the, the millage rates and all the other elements of the budget. So what I'm going to step through tonight is just a real quick recap on the ground we covered in, back in October, and some of the numbers, as you, as you would imagine, might have changed a little bit. We're still pretty much where we were before. And then talk about some of the, the staffing requests from, that the administration had, as well as the community organization requests and the, the calendar. So this is the exact same screen slide that was presented back on October 14th for the general fund, noting that for 2025, we're about 174,000 short on revenue to cover all of the expenses. Moving, or fast forwarding to today, that number's changed to 207,000-ish. There's about 100 different light items that changed within the budget, getting final numbers on next year's healthcare costs, employee-related costs, some contractual services that changed or that became more clear. We closed on the bonds for the facilities, which changed some of the debt service numbers. Just a lot of different things changed over the last month, including some additional revenues, but in total, the bottom line moved to about 207,000 short on revenues. And as presented last month, that's the, the delta that we would typically cover with a millage change to cover. So again, this is back as it was presented on October 14th, we were looking at .0487 mils and about a 2% change. That does incorporate $100,000 that moments ago the board passed as part of the Wayne Master Plan. It also carves out a little bit of money, 25,000, to start the zoning rewrite, which is the other big element included in the comp plan, the more immediate element included in the comp plan for us to move forward with. Fast forwarding again to tonight, where the numbers exist today is that the millage change from, changes from that 2% to about 2.15. It still incorporates those same two elements. So the baseline change is about 0.15% of a tax change in terms of dollars to the impact. I've got a calculator on here. We can look at the exact dollars, but it's, it's maybe a dollar or two is really the change, and it generates the revenue to, to cover next year's entire operating budget and all the elements that are included in it, including these two. So that takes us to where we are. Anything that we discuss now moving forward is, is outside those numbers, and we would need some sort of a revenue offset to, to fund those. If you'll recall back in October, there were a handful administrative positions that have been requested by our various departments, and as I talked about last month, these come up on a regular basis operationally in our everyday conversations. And as I talked about last month, these come up on a regular basis operationally in our everyday conversations, understanding that, you know, from the boards and the public's perspective, there, we have not had a great deal of time to discuss the need for these. So what, what I'm recommending at this point is to continue talking about those positions and getting into more details on the calls for service and the demand that is generating the requests from the department. And that, at this point, for decision-making and millage setting purposes, it's, it's premature. And coupled with the fact that we, we know that the comprehensive plan is coming and within that plan are different priorities that may address some of the requests that the departments are looking for. So again, it just, it, it seems premature to try to move forward on positional changes that I think discussions surrounding will be more natural with the comp plan and the prioritization that comes with that. That said, the one position that is incorporated in the, the comprehensive plan or is going to be recommended as part of the comprehensive plan, and we'll hear more about this at the, at the next meeting. I think the economic development part is in that next segment that Adam will be presenting at the next meeting, is a resource, a township resource dedicated towards managing the economic development of the township. This is a position that's been discussed for a few years now. And ultimately, the, the discussion always comes back to, well, what's the person going to do? How are we going to measure success? What does this actually look like? So we spent the better part of the last year looking at surrounding municipalities here regionally, as well as economic development positions nationally, and capturing what we thought were some of the better elements within those positions. The good part, or the good news is, is that most of this information, these are, these are successes within those municipalities already. So it's not, these are actual, they're tangible, they're real. We've, we've got the data that these municipalities are using to track the success of their, their efforts. And we're happy to, to copycat and to some extent, what they're doing that is successful. And what I've done on this slide is kind of put a, a summary together of the various larger elements of the position. This person we acquired to manage development by industry groupings, we have different segments of our town. We have commercial real estate, we have the Wayne area, we have the Garrett Hill business area. We have businesses in between and throughout. Each one of those probably requires a little bit different level of understanding and expertise into what makes those areas successful. We would ask this person to track, you know, how many companies they're engaging with? What is the private capital investment going on? How are jobs trending or tracking? Perspective business pipelines, what's going on, who's interested? This would be the resource that prospective businesses would contact here at the municipality to start those conversations. They'd be the conduit to our, our community development and our engineering folks, as well as any of our other code-related items to get them started. In addition to that, measuring business retention and expansion, a lot of time over the last couple of years has been spent focusing on empty storefronts. This person would be in charge of or tasked with having an answer for those. What's going on here, what's going on there? What is, you know, what are the trends? What are you seeing? Where are opportunities? Where are threats at? What should the township be focusing on to help drive reinvestment and getting folks back into there? Right now, those things I'm sure are happening in the private element, but they're outside of any conversations that we're part of. And there might be opportunities we're missing as a municipality to invest in infrastructure. There might be opportunities missed. I know the governor has adopted his economic development plan for the Commonwealth that includes new incentives that might be available for the township to offer. We would, in all likelihood, be the conduit of money for that. So we would apply through the state and then pass those programs on to the end users. So this position would manage those opportunities. And again, currently, those types of things are not being done for our businesses. There's opportunities there that I think we're missing. Entrepreneur growth at tonight's meeting was a great example of an opportunity that someone is out very far ahead of us with a great opportunity that they've, they've spearheaded. What else is out there? Are there folks out there that if we were more actively recruiting and calling for entrepreneurs to come here and invest, might those persons, might those folks start showing up? And we start the conversation instead of being a little bit more reactive to the conversation starting outside of us. And then attract, or enhance and promote Radnor's business advantages. We're going to see a lot within the comp plan of Radnor's excellent positioning, both geographically, economically, all of these positive elements that we have within our community. How do we best promote that to help our, our business environment, our business community here in town? And again, it's, it's an active resource, it's somewhat, it's a position that someone is doing every single day. It's meeting with the landlords, it's meeting with the major re, commercial re, renter, or, sorry, real estate owners to get an understanding of where their leases are at. For example, you know, is there a point in time, some years out, where there might be a gap in commercial real estate leases? Or is there a, a, a point in time where there's a major vacancy that we could start anticipating years out and start having conversations now to either help fill that or to help work with the, the landowner on alternatives that might occur there? Again, right now, the way that works is that lease ends, then we're notified that that lease ended. And next thing we have is a, a land development proposal in front of the board and the public about what they're going to do with the land, and it's all real time. The hope here would be to get out ahead of that and be part of the conversation much earlier. And then obviously linking that back to the, the comp plan and the priorities within that. So I think this, I, this is a full-time job, it's, it's probably more than that. What we're would, what, what I'm asking for, what was part of the discussion tonight is for inclusion in the budget. Ultimately, this is part of the comp plan. We expect that conversation to happen, happen as part of the comp plan adoption. But this is our one chance to adopt a budget. We don't get another bite at this apple until a year from now. So incorporating this in the budget now sets us up to be able to move on it next year or not, depending on how those conversations go with the board and what direction we ultimately want to go. Switching gears to our community organizations. This is the same slide I presented at the last meeting with two quick exceptions. First of all, Brew Mall Fire Company came in late with a, a small request of five thousand dollars. So that was added to this slide. And then I had a, a mathematical error on the library's request. Their request of a three point nine percent change or forty-one thousand and change was actually doubled up in my presentation last time. So what they've, what they're actually looking for is three point nine percent or forty-one thousand five twelve instead of the eighty-two or eighty-three thousand I, I had presented back in October. Drilling into these requests a little bit, we have our three fire companies that provide services here in Radnor. This is a quick chart that shows the years and the contributions made by Radnor Township to the fire companies. As you can imagine, based on the, the coverage area, Radnor Fire Company gets the bulk of these dollars. Additionally, Radnor Fire Company also provides the ambulance service throughout the entire township. Bryn Mawr provides a fire service to about a third on the, the east and south side of town. Brew Mall covers this, a small section of the south side of town up next to Newtown. And the non-fire company-specific expenses is a really long way of saying our Aqua fire hydrant costs. That's, that's what that number is. We have to buy, pay Aqua to supply water to the hydrants and that's what that cost is. So we, we carve that out and report it separately and don't assign that to any one of the fire companies since the entire township benefits from that. Drilling into those numbers a little bit, just to provide some historical and additional context on how these numbers are derived. This is a historical chart that we, we started back in 2017 when requests from the fire companies started coming in a little bit more frequent. Prior to then, the, the funding amounts for the companies were pretty static year over year because presumably they were mostly volunteer and the need for additional funding at this type of clip was not as significant. So in 2017, we started this, this tracking and we identified different decisions made annually to provide the, and I'm pointing at Radnor Fire Company first. Each company has their own segment of this table. So within Rad, looking at Radnor Fire Company specifically, there, there have been different subsidies authorized by the Board of Commissioners over the years. And so we've identified what those were and what they were for. So in each of these cases, they were for fire operations, as was presented by the fire companies. It should be noted that within the Radnor Fire Company, the ambulance and the fire operate out of a single operating fund. So any subsidies we give is probably for both. Then in 2022, we had started a, a stipend program that was approved by the Board of Commissioners. In 2024, the SAFER grant that had been awarded back in 2020 had run out. So what we had obligated at the time is that when that grant had expired, the township would be backfilling those grant dollars to allow the fire company to keep those folks hired on staff. So that's what the one fifty-three fifty-five was. In addition to those operating subsidies, the township also provides capital contributions of two hundred thousand dollars, roughly two hundred thousand up until 2023, and then it was two twenty, this year two twenty-five. And then that, the subtotal of direct contributions represents the total of the amount that the township is cutting to the fire company specifically. And in the case of Radnor Fire Company, there's two additional expenses on top of that. We buy the fuel for the company and for those vehicles. And we are also obligated to buy the workers' compensation's coverage for those volunteer and staff members. And then we have Bryn Mawr Fire Company, a lot less detail going into those numbers. As you can see, the, the operating contributions have been relatively stable over the years. The, the increases provided didn't represent any kind of new hire or significant adjustments. So they were just rolled in with the, the baseline operating subsidy. Same thing with the stipend program that was started back in 2022. And with Bryn Mawr, we do provide them with capital contributions. Again, that number's been relatively stable. As you can imagine, though, in the recent years, those have gone up. And then Brew, Brew Mall, it's just a, a, a very small amount of operating subsidy that we, we do provide them. So out of the three fire companies, the requests for increases are as follows. Each of the next three slides goes into a little bit more detail about these. Radnor Fire Company has asked the township for another one hundred and sixty-four thousand and change in operating, another eleven thousand two fifty for capital. The table that's shown here is just their portion of the table I just presented. The recommendation at this point, and this is what's up for discussion and direction going forward, is is a, is the township hire a resource dedicated to the management of the fire and EMS service throughout the town? So what that's saying is currently there is a vacant position within our community development department. That person was charged with running our fire inspection program. That position was vacated about a year ago, so we have a, an empty position within our org chart. So it would be redirecting that position to, to head up management of this activity from the township's perspective. So what this person would be asked to do is have operational expertise in both fire and EMS service so that they can have the everyday conversations with the three fire companies. And so much, the same conversation with our business and economic development, it's that we have someone here at the township that is actively and daily managing the service that's being provided by these companies. And let me be perfectly clear that there's, as I'm making this presentation, there's not an issue with the service itself. The issue is more on the, the, the request for funding and what that might look like over the next couple of years. We've been told by Radnor Fire Company especially that there's some funding needs down the road. So prior to us finding ourselves in an October of, you know, 2027 or 2028, the fire company showing up and asking for a half a million dollars, what we're hoping to do with this resource is to get ahead of that now, start working with the fire company and understand exactly what that looks like, report back to the Board of Commissioners and the public on a regular basis so we can start developing a plan on what that looks like. So right now, the, the expertise to have those conversations is not something that we have on staff. The resource that is being recommended here is, is not unusual. Many municipalities around us, especially those that have multiple fire companies within their jurisdiction, usually have a township resource that are managing these relationships and these costs. So that's, so before we start moving and allocating additional dollar amounts to address issues, the recommendation is, is to, to get the resource on staff, start having those conversations, start getting a better idea of where these companies are at in terms of their finances and what the long-term impact, impact was, is going to be to Radnor Township. It's to, to hold fast with providing any additional dollars until we have a better understanding of what the actual issue is and can start making those decisions based on a service component rather than a, a request from a, a fire company component. Because as much as I think everybody wants to make sure that these companies are well-funded and can provide the service, at the end of the day, that the township is responsible for the stewardship of the taxpayer dollars. And so having that information and that level of expertise and understanding, I think, is critical to everyone here before we start making those decisions on allocating additional dollars. So if, if we're able to move forward with the, the resource, that person would be immediately tasked with, you know, obviously developing the relationships, getting a better understanding of the service, how the service is provided on a daily basis within those companies, to then start developing, you know, policy reviews and then funding reviews, all in an effort to get back in front of this board and the public with regular updates on the service and then what it's going to cost in the long run. So that is a, a long way of, of presenting that for 2025, what's been included in the budget is not including the, the increases that have been recommended by the, or requested by the fire companies, but instead, the township using our resources to, to get their expertise in-house and then come back with these requests, again, based on more of a service model and what that looks like. One additional piece of context with regard to capital is we'd, we'd ask this person to work with the Radnor Fire Company and the Bryn Mawr Fire Company to get a better understanding of what opportunities to use the Volunteer Fire Relief Association balances, what opportunities are there to help offset some of the capital costs? Because we understand, as we understand it, there, there might be opportunities there. But again, we don't have that expertise. We would, we would ask this person to come in and help kind of guide that conversation with the fire companies as we move forward. Bryn Mawr Fire Company, company, much the same. They had a, a much larger percentage increase, both in operations and capital. At this point, I, I think until we can, again, get our arms wrapped around why the requests are coming in and what it means to the Radnor public, at least my recommendation is to hold off on providing those dollars, again, until we are able to, to have a comfort level with what that's going towards in terms of service. Brew Mall, while it's not a significant amount of money, the, the principal issue still is there. How is that service incorporated in Radnor Township? How does it interact with the other fire companies? And, and are we doing it the very best way? So while, again, it's not a large amount of money, the concept, the, the lack of understanding is the same. Community organizations, we go through this discussion every year as part of the budget. This is a, similar to the fire companies, this is the same kind of visual, visual representation of the, the organizations that we provide funding to. Obviously, the library is the largest and for good reason. Obviously, the library is the largest and for good reason. If it wasn't being run by a separate 501(c)(3), we would have a Radnor Township Library Department. That would probably cost somewhere near that amount, if not more. And then the township also provides direct funding subsidies to the Senior Center, Suri Services, Art Center, Historical Society. We give $4,000 each to the two parades in town. In the last couple of years, we've provided a subsidy for the Music Fest. And then the other, that represents a $5,000 contribution to the Women's Resource Center that started back in 2019. This is the same, same graph, I just took the library off because their amount is so large, it kind of throws off the, the, you get, you get lost, the dollar amount kind of gets lost. So the purpose of this is to demonstrate that when we're talking about these contributions, Senior Center is by far the largest, but outside of that, we're talking where, anywhere from 5,000 to a little, little less than $40,000. So in the, in the grand scheme of the township's budget, the amounts are not overly significant. Out of all of those organizations, these three asked the township for additional funding this year. Again, the library at 3.9% or roughly 41,000 and change, the Senior Center 8,400, and the Art Center at 5,000. Some additional context on those requests, what the library's asking for is 3.9% to cover operating expenses, most of which is 3.5% included in COLA increases for their staff. I'm not here to present on the library's behalf, but I, knowing their budget, they're much the same as the township is, they're a service industry. Most of their expenses are cost-related, so having a three and a half percent increase on the staff side does correlate to needing more revenue. The one element that I did highlight here is that the request keeps the township's funding at 64% of the library's total budget. So this, they're not asking for more money to, to take up a larger percentage of their revenue makeup, they're still getting their other revenues in the same relative amount as what they were getting from the township before. So their, their expense budget's growing, they're not asking the township to carry a larger burden of that, they're just asking the township to keep pace. And they also did note that they're increasing their fundraising efforts by 10% to, again, to offset that, to try to keep the township at 64%. The Wayne Senior Center provided this context for their increase. Obviously, they, they, they're our primary source of programming and assistance to this, this demographic of our town. The one, what they're really asking for is $8,400 as a capital request to install ADA handrails in a walkway. So since that's our building, you know, this is really a decision that either we pay for it directly or we give them the money and they put it in. Either way, it's, it's going to be a township expense one way or the other. And then last, the Art Center, they've asked for a $5,000 increase to take them from 25 up to 30. You could see over time, this is kind of the cadence of these requests. It holds steady for a few years and there's a little increase a couple of years and then another increase. This $5,000 is to support the youth and adult arts programming held at the Art Center as well as general oper, operations. So how does all this get incorporated into the mileage rate? So this is, again, this is just a quick reset on where we started, the, the 2.15% to break even. And then let me end this. It's coming, I promise. Or maybe not. It's that Arm Russell PowerPoint. So this is just the live spreadsheet of the same slide I just presented. This is the, the general fund operating statement, that is the 206,000 and change from the baseline operations. Then we get to the, the modifications to that to build out our budget. This is the, the $1,000 for our share of the Wayne Master Plan, the 25,000 to get started on the zoning rewrite, rewrite. And then we have the, the different positions and different requests from the outside organizations. What I, we've got two columns here, I know they're a little tough to see on the screen from across the room with my contact lenses, but we have two columns, a requested amount, which pulls directly from the presentation, a BOC amount, which ultimately populates the column that gets us to the bottom line. So just to get the conversation started, I included the, the economic development person, held, held the fire company requests at this point at zero, incorporated the, the three requests from the library, the Senior Center, and the Art Center. That additional 200,000-ish changes the tax proposal from the 2.15% to three and a half What three and a half percent would cost is about $47 to the median. When you compare that against the, the 2.15, that was about $29, and I'm looking at this here. So, so from 29 to 46 would generate the funding for those other elements. So that's the discussion and direction that we're looking for from the commissioners. We could, I mean, obviously, time has been allocated tonight. If we're not at a point where we make a decision tonight on any one of these, we can come back at the next meeting, make a determination, and then ultimately, the, the 2025 budget ordinance would include whatever that decision is for introduction at the next meeting and then ultimate adoption at the October, I'm sorry, October, December 9th meeting, I'm going backwards in time. So that's it for the presentation.
Thank you, well summarized. Commissioner, questions, comments?
Yeah, probably a lot of them. I'm happy to let somebody else get started, but I've got a couple of thoughts on, okay. I will jump into the economic development position. This is something that I have been discussing with the manager and our president and others throughout the years. I think we see in our township a real need. We've talked about it all the time, the empty storefronts, great to see somebody coming out tonight to help us fill one of those. I think this is an essential position, it's, it's, it's filling a gap that I think a lot of our really great staff have been trying to kind of cobble together as a team, but I'm looking for somebody who really comes with a track record and a history of doing this type of work. So that leads me to just my one question, if the salary level is high enough? And I say that because I know this is all-inclusive, so that's putting us probably a little bit below 100. And if we want somebody who has, you know, been out fighting for other towns, you know, I'd like somebody to come with a lot of connections and a, and a large network. So a little bit more advanced in their career perhaps in that salary level. And I also think that, and I don't know that what line it would go into in the budget, but I also envision that this is somebody who would need to travel, probably, you know, need a vehicle because they're in the community all the time. So they're, I'm just worried that this isn't enough. It might be that it's all we can do at this point to get started, but I'd like to actually, you know, I'd like to discuss with commissioners and, you know, tonight about whether we have the appetite to maybe pack a little bit more into that line item to give us the flexibility to find the right person. Maybe we don't need to spend it, but it would be there in case the right person comes along with a, with a salary requirement. So I'll just, I'll start with that because my other is on a, on a different issue and I'm, I'm sure that commissioners have some thought about this position, but that's, that's my first reaction.
Can I provide a little context on the number? Cause we did think about this, and in fact, I presented a $200,000 number at, in October for this position. We backed that down to 150 with a couple of things. First of all, tying it to the comp plan and the adoption of that. So we'll get through the comp plan, and by the time we are actively recruiting this position, it's going to be spring. By the time we get this person on board, it'll probably be summer. So if, if we need, if, if the caliber of the individual demands a higher wage, we'll have the flexibility in this number to, to accomplish that. Secondarily, those other, any other major expenses like a, a vehicle or something like that, we have a fleet that we could solve that issue on a short term, at least on a short term, if not permanently. So I'm not really concerned about those types of costs and traveling, I think there's enough built into this number to, to cover. Whoever the, the person is, should we move forward with it, it's going to take six months just to learn their way around town, assuming they don't already have that, I guess, but it's going to take them a while to get their feet before they're really spending money.
So in your, in your research, and I know that you looked at a lot of different municipalities in this type of role, can you off the top of your head, and if you can't, I'll withdraw the question, but what is that kind of salary range you're seeing for the type of person that we're thinking of, just local, anything?
Yeah, I mean, 120-ish. I mean, it, it depends a lot on, like Midwest, you know, someone in the Midwest is probably making 100, but out here, that's, that's probably 120 north plus. So it depends regionally where they're at, but around here, about 120 is kind of where we, we'd start conversations.
Do other townships around here have this position?
There's actually not many around here.
As in none, or how many have?
Yeah, so these responsibilities, like say Lower Mary, for example, they're baked into a planning and, an entire department dedicated towards planning. So they have maybe not an economic development manager, but they've got a staff of, I don't know the exact number, but it's multiple people doing these little bits and pieces. So it's hard to draw apples to apples comparison when they have, there's a whole department dedicated to not just economic development, but also planning.
And what are the qualifications for the position?
Yeah, so the on paper qualifications are going to be some sort of background in planning, education and background in planning, I think would be the ideal. Then someone who is most likely either spent time in the private sector, doing these types of agreements for an individual, a company or representing companies and trying to fill space. So someone who has the expertise to understand the leases that go into, that these businesses are, are entering into, but then also have some, that, that's where, the other element is the planning aspect so that they can, they understand the municipal side of the, the issue, which is obviously pretty complex.
Cause I feel the same as Commissioner Mulrooney, when I saw the salary, I was like, hmm, we, we're trying to get somebody who's doing this someplace else and lure them into lovely Radnor or?
Maybe.
Maybe?
Yeah, I would have to see what the pool looks like.
Yeah, I think that it would, you know, a variety of backgrounds could serve here. I'm thinking of people who work at a Chamber of Commerce. You know, right now, this service is being provided to the community through the Wayne Business Association essentially. They're kind of the first point of contact and, you know, wonderful organization and we're, we're proud to have them as a part of our community, but they don't have, you know, they're not official representatives. And I just believe that somebody with a broader view, standing from the township perspective, would be working hand in hand with the WBA, but, you know, I think somebody with a business degree or a former business owner, some, you know, some folks who kind of rub elbows with all, with, you know, small businesses. So I, I think we can sort of throw a, a wide net, especially since I think around here there isn't anybody to kind of lure to the wonderful Radnor Township.
I'd just add one thing, I, I think this is a role that's really important in certain communities. I've had the pleasure of knowing a couple of really talented community development folks and economic community development folks, but at a large, much larger scale, right? I think one of the things, because this is a manager level position and a director of economic community development, so I think the salary range is probably more in line with a manager type position. I think, and what you've outlined from what you're asking them to do, which is mostly, I mean, I see four words of develop, right? I think the reality is a lot of it's tracking and management. I think one of the things I'd like to see more of is maybe more benchmarks or some sort of delivery, right? The reality is that we want this person to grow the business and, and economics of the, of the township, so I think there would need to be some sort of expectation from a performance perspective. Typically with these folks, you're looking at, you know, we need to see an increase in what, $5 million in net revenue for the township or something like, you got to give them some sort of level of performance, otherwise it's another administrative role that doesn't seem to be all that necessary. But if we think that they can bring ROI, given the, the salary, I think that's the right, it's a, it's really a good idea, and I just, I think fleshing out the job description and kind of competencies and kind of performance metrics would be really good for me at least.
Yeah, I think also the, you know, Bill, as you had said, the original year is not going to be a complete year, and in fact, you might be looking at somebody that's paid more, but this is a position that should easily pay for itself, is it not?
Yeah, ideally, yes.
Like that's what I'm, like what, what does that look like?
You're looking for a metric, it's, it's hard to, hard to find it.
Yeah, but I.
But I don't see that this position is worth much if it's not bringing in enough business to collect taxes from to pay for itself.
Yeah, so I mean, part of the small font all the way on the end of this is, is some of those benchmarks. It's tracking the number of businesses that they've recruited, how are they doing on retention, what is the capital investment growth, what is the job growth? If there's capital investment and job growth, that's expansion, which should correlate to expanded, you know, revenues. Where that conversation always gets tricky is we certainly wouldn't want prospective candidates being worried that if we run into a recession or an economic downturn entirely outside of anyone's control here, and maybe the time when we need this person the most, we're also going to see revenues backing up on us. And so that's where the, the conversation of correlating this position to paying for itself or, you know, putting that kind of direct job description gets a little, gets a little tricky. It might be tough to, to recruit someone who's willing to move or start down this venture with that kind of, that kind of risk on something outside of their control.
I ask, just a quick response to what he said, or do you, you want to go?
Oh, you can go ahead, I'll, I'll.
I was just going to say, there's also, I mean, I think there's an ethical issue as well. I mean, they're the right way to do things and the ways that, you know, maybe lead to that, that dollar figure that we hung on somebody. So it's not my area of expertise, but I would imagine that the, you know, the metrics and the KPIs that we give them, I, I agree with you, they have to make sense, they have to show that there is value being brought into the community, but I also caution, like if a major business, you know, like somebody retires in a big restaurant downtown Wayne, it's not going to be this person's fault that we lose like a long-term business because the family has decided to retire. So it's a little, I think it is hard, and I think maybe it, there's a lot of conversation that maybe we could have about what those look like.
Totally, and, and I'm, I, I would love to help, you know, shape some of it. I, I mean, this is, this is kind of what I do, right? So at the end of the day, you know, and, and I agree, right? Like every business has to face the realities of a recession, right? And there's a lot of people out in this world that work on commission. So what I'd say is I don't think it needs to be a commission job, but I think we do need to have really good targets for growth, and that should be what we hold their performance against, meaning if we have someone that comes in and we do have a, an expectation of particular growth, I mean, you have a great thing here, like the incentive programs with the state, I think those are really good. Matt Kispert down in Nashville brought Toyota, Bridgestone, lots of really great companies, Dell, doing those programs. I think that's a really, really great way to say, hey, look, these are ways to move the needle for the township and create these opportunities. How many of those have you brought to the table? I think those, and what are the performance of those incentive programs? Those are the type of measures I think we could use that are, you know, around that ROI, but not necessarily hard and fast. Well, you didn't sell 1,000 units, so you're out of here, get the TPS reports, right? We're not looking for that, but I think it's really more about how do we start benchmarking the performance and value of the role as, as a whole, right?
And realizing it's going to take a while to get up to.
This is a multi-year type job, right? Like this is, there's like, this is not something you see like immediate, but I think this is a really good investment. I would just love to flesh out kind of what our expectations are. I would just love to flesh out kind of what our expectations are for an economic development representative overall.
Yeah, 100%. So for tonight's discussion, it's about whether or not we want to continue the conversation with the budget. Once, if, yeah, the, yeah, the actual development of the job description and the, what we're going to track the success of the position by comes, if it's included in the budget.
To me, it's, to me, it's worth fleshing out. I think, you know, having somebody in Radnor, I mean, as you look at some of the business parks and the things that we have here that are really, you know, great, I think there's a lot of ways to bring companies here to bring, you know, more revenue for us and also bring more shoppers for downtown Wayne, more, you know, patrons for the restaurants. I think there's a lot of good ways to do that. I think it's a really good investment. So thank you for proposing it.
All right, other commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Abel, you're scalding. Do you have any questions?
It's budget time.
No, do you want to tell us why you, no, okay. All right, everybody's good?
I did have a question about the other investments, though. Could we ask those now? Are we good to move on to the next piece? So as you look at the, and I don't want to be the one guy that's like, no library, but when I look at spend that goes up and up on a library that does have a lot of really good expenses or good experiences for kids and community, I do wonder what exactly the budget's being spent on. Do we have, you know, when we look at what's going into these organizations, do we have a breakdown of how they're managing our investment? Mostly because I haven't bought a book or know a lot of people that have bought a physical book in a long time. So I know, I'm hoping that investments going into more innovative programs for community development or other things. I just, I'm not sure what exactly the money's being spent on.
Yeah, so going back a few years, what we used to do this time of year is have all of these organizations come in and present to the commissioners and answer those types of questions. I think there was some fatigue at the board level about those presentations. So we haven't done them for the last couple of years. But what we get as part of what we, when we ask, we ask them, when they submit their requests, they submit some backup information that come with it, including those types of things. Their budgets, their annual reports, you know, operational brochures and the like. So we can certainly share that information with the board. And it's probably not a bad idea, at some point, maybe throughout the year, instead of maybe jamming it all into one night where it takes four hours, is, we'd kind of spread these presentations out and you get those answers directly from them. Because I'm sure Joyce would love to come and brag up the library.
Yeah, I think, look, we're talking about over the last five years incrementally for the library, what, about a half a million dollars, right? So I think, you know, for me, it's like, the increase, I ask for more budget every year, and my CFO every year says no, right? And that gives me maybe like, a little bit. But I think, you know, I have to go through a lot of rigor to explain why my budget needs to be increased year over year. And yes, there's cost increases and things like that. There's also investments in future programs that I try to make every year. So I guess my question is, when I see something like this, I think this is a really great, easy narrative, but there's no executive summary, at least it gives me a breakdown of what their current spends are. And I think that'd be really helpful when we're talking about big shifts like this. $8,400 for a ramp is a really good investment, you know what I mean? Or a rail, like, that's not the thing I'm talking about. When we talk about half a million or something like that, we're over five years, we're starting to get into some numbers that I think are worth breaking down a little further.
Yeah, Bill, you had created, and I assume this is what you're talking about, is that you had created sort of an application. We used to just do it by come in and ask, and we'll say, you know, you put a little bit of guardrails around it. And it's my recollection that you did share those, and it did ask the questions about, you know, their budget, their service area, how many Radnor residents are served. I can kind of picture the form.
Yep.
So if you would circulate, I think, all of them to this board, it would allow us to look at that more closely.
Absolutely, yes.
I do think, though, that the library, it's, most likely, it's personnel. I think Maggie knows that for certain. And we all know what, you know, the cost of living increases are and should be. But this is, you do bring up something, I think, that I've been wondering. You know, we make a significant contribution to the Willow's Park Preserve, and we bring them out twice a year to talk about it. We don't to these others. And I would think maybe for those that were giving over a million dollars, they should be asked to come and present and let us ask them a few more questions. Because it, you know, for the lower-level ones, we know we're just a very small portion of their budget. But when we are the majority of their budget, I think we should get in it a little deeper. It's sort of what we're trying to do by putting a couple of commissioners on the Radnor Fire Company Board so that we can understand their finances better and all of the challenges facing fire companies these days. But, yeah, I would just ask that maybe for next year, we get some regular updates from the large contribution organizations.
Absolutely. I think they would welcome that. I, I think they enjoyed those opportunities to come and talk about their organizations. And while those conversations weren't always easy, they had to kind of go through the same, ask for more money and be told no process. At least gave them an opportunity to talk about their organizations and what they're doing for the community. So I think that'll be an easy request.
Any other discussion? No?
Bill, what do you, what do you actually need from us? This was discussion and direction. So what is the direction part of this?
So the direction part is ultimately what we're trying to get to is, our budget ordinance includes not only the adoption of the appropriation budget, but also the millage that gets attached to that. So it's getting the board to a comfort level on what millage amount you would like included in that ordinance.
Yeah, I think for me, it's, I mean, we have the head count. I mean, you're looking at the three and a half that will cover the head count in these three contributions effectively, is what you're suggesting, right? Or is the three and a half cover the other overage as well?
It covers all of it. It covers the baseline shortfall, as well as the addition of the economic development position and additional funding to those, the three organizations. So it's the whole thing.
You're going to hate me, Bill. Do we have like a three-tiered, this is a base, you know? I'm looking for like, what's your base case here, right? Because at the end of the day, increasing millage is ideally not what I want to do. But at the same time, are there things that we could live without somewhere else in the budget where you could start to make up some of the difference and keep some of the millage increases lower?
Yeah, well, happy to meet and drill into some of those things. I mean, operationally, we spent the better part of the last decade trimming, trimming, trimming. And it was, it's really a, you know, what gives? So is there a service or a program or something that we're doing now that we don't value like we used to, where it's a reduction in some sort of, I mean, staff or something along those lines?
Yeah, yeah, I think for me, it's just like, what are, what are the, you know, I mean, how important is this role? How important are these contributions to the other organizations in comparison to the current overs that we have, right? So I think the way I look at it is, like, what's our base case? What can we get by without? What are the sacrifices we're willing to make and compromises? And then, you know, if we could make it all happen, we know what that is. That's three and a half percent. Me personally, looking at, we just did this, you know, re-leveling of all the taxes, and then we're going to go and say, hey, we're going to do another millage increase of three and a half percent after all of your taxes just went up. I just can't imagine the community would really appreciate that without really clear explanation for the value they're going to get back for that increase. So for me, I would say, hey, look, what could we live without? Give me the base case. We know what the top case is, and then where's the, where's the middle ground in relation to? We know what the base case is, that's your standard budget. But like, where's the middle ground that we could cut some other things out? And for me, looking at it that way just helps, we talked about this earlier, like, helps me illustrate the increase in value.
Are you looking for a response now?
No.
I was just going to say.
No.
I mean, the answer lies in, what is it that you, we don't want? Like, I can't guess that. I would need direction from you on what you don't want to see anymore.
Yeah, I mean, I think from my perspective, I, I mean, and I hate to do this, put it back to you, say, you know the budget way better than I do, right? Thankfully. But, so I guess what I would ask is, are, you know, where do you see places to trim? And is it personnel? Is it program? Is it something else? And where do you feel like there's a request for an increase outvalues what you're currently doing? And I think for me, I'd love to find a flat plane, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I know what you mean. I mean, immediately, I'd say it's in the legal costs that we spend. Like, we could probably break even. I was just seeing if John was paying attention.
Just in the sheer volume of emails we exchange would save us enough.
Yeah, yeah. So that, like, we can get into that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think you have to answer gut.
And that's part of why we had the departments present at the last meeting, is just to provide a kind of a broad reminder on all of the different things that they're doing with the staff that we do have. So, yeah.
I mean, we're looking for, what, another half a million dollars, right? So at the end of the day, each, if each department head said, how do you cut $150,000 out of your budget to cover the new ECM and these new contributions to our other groups, what would they say? I think for, like, I do that with my departments all the time. I just had to cut $700,000 out of my budget, right? So, but I couldn't just say, hey, look, stop doing this one thing. I had to go to my leaders and say, where can we make adjustments? Because there's other things we want to invest in. So how do we start to make those trade-offs? I think if we just keep saying every year, here's three and a half more percent, we're going to end up in a situation that we're not going to like.
Yeah, so I'm, my primary pushback to that is, is that what happens operationally on a daily basis is that we never meet expectations. I mean, you guys get the emails, you forward them to us. It's, look at this, solve this, you know, jump on that, do this, do that. People are speeding down my road, no one's stopping at stop signs, we need cops, you know, on all these different locations.
Those are just my emails. Can you call some of the other commissioners?
So, you know, and where our operation differs from most private industries is that we never meet expectation. We're always chasing expectation. So it, in these kind of conversations where it's, where are you willing to draw the line or pull back on? It's, well, how much further behind do you want us to fall in terms of being responsive to the community? And is that worth, you know, pulling back on a tax? Then, I mean, we'll have the conversation. Or is the level of service that we are able to provide with the folks that we have that are doing a good job, is that, you know, is that worth the investment that we're making through our taxes?
Well, I think you're doing a great job for what it's worth.
Well, thanks. But, I mean, at the end of the day, we've got to get down to-
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know where it lies, and I don't want to beat it up. I'm just suggesting, maybe if we had some options, we could say, hey, look, here's some areas where the commissioners are all in agreement that we'd be willing to go to bat with our constituents to say, these are the right trade-offs to make with regards to the budget, in an effort to try not to increase taxes.
So, Bill, I recall in a previous year, you actually shared this and allowed, you know, in the spreadsheet, allowed commissioners kind of play around with it, to see like, if we cut this out of Parks and Rec, what would it do over here? And kind of toolled around. Is that something that you'd be interested in? James, is like-
You can't mean no spreadsheet, it could get, it could get dangerous. I will break all the formulas.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that. I think, you know, and too, and then just being able to present it back to Tammy or whomever and say, what does this actually mean for the department? I think that's the context that I'm missing with each of the line items in the spreadsheet, is that I don't know what each line actually represents as it relates to the output.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is you'd get the big one. And you would say that, you know, probably it's primarily staff in our departments, right, that pull off all the camps and all the teams and all that. You know, there's, it's a lean machine. And, you know, I don't want to raise taxes on myself or the community like anybody else. But I also really love Radnor and our responsiveness, our amenities. I like being able to solve the problems of my residents quickly and not have to make apologies for why they're not being served. I can just say, thanks for bringing it to my attention, and we will address it. So, you know, having lived in other places that you don't get so much from your tax dollars, like, I feel like I can put a value on that, that for $46 a year increase on top of what I'm currently paying, you know, I get a boost in our economic, you know, downtown. And last year, it was getting a, you know, a community support unit with the police department that has, you know, shown itself to be incredibly valuable. So in my time on the board, I've not seen money being misspent or thrown around, so.
Yeah, and please don't misconstrue my suggestions here. That's not at all what I'm, what I'm suggesting is happening. I think what I'm saying is, it's $46 today, the next time, it's another 46, and it's another 46, now we're into the hundreds. And I'm just saying, this is how the snowball effect happens. I think what I'm trying to suggest is that, as we look at these increases, having it represented as, if we keep base, these are the things we lose, these are the things that they've proposed, right? If we were to cut some things, these are the things we'd be willing to sacrifice for these upticks. These are the things I'm willing to walk away from. And then you say, hey, look, but actually, best-case scenario for the township is to do this increase, and we can evaluate it that way. Right now, we're only getting one ask for an increase without an understanding of, you know, anywhere else, right? I love this township, that's why I won't ever leave. I'm unfortunately stuck here forever anyway. But the truth is, like, we can't just continue to look at a 2%, 3% and say, it's no big deal. When you multiply that across every family, I mean, not everybody has the extra 150, 200 bucks a year when it starts to go to that. So for me, it's, I just want to make sure that we're being good stewards of everybody's time and money and saying, hey, look, we've evaluated it from all angles, and we think this is the right path forward. And I'm willing to do that if I can say that I had the time to do it. I just don't think I've seen it from those angles enough to be able to say, yeah, absolutely, 100%, right behind you, right? Which is what I want to be able to do.
It's a complicated budget to try to get on a first pass. It's not something that would be easy. I do want to ask, though, about a couple of things that we have done to be proactive and presumably decrease the amount of money that we spend, like solar panels on the roof and LED lights in the streetlights. Are we getting any kind of handle on savings? Like, that we've already built and we intended it to be built in. It's good for the world, and it's good for our budget.
So specific to those, those, yeah, and they were presented, we obviously have the capital costs upfront. So there's, you know, we're a few years out from seeing actual operational reductions in the expenditures until we get the debt paid off that we issued to do the projects. Yeah, so, again, it, yeah, it's personnel, it's folks answering the phones and going out to the sites and doing the work. So that's where the reductions are at. And as much as I'd like to point back even at some of the other things, like capital or some of our contracted services, I mean, it's the same thing. So it's, you know, I'm just, I'm making stuff up, but like, the license plate readers. You know, we could, yeah, we could get rid of that. But, you know, I can also go, what goes with that are the, you know, the hundreds of pickups that those have captured for our police department and helped us, you know, make some significant arrests and catch some folks. Same thing, even on a less serious note, but on the parking side. You know, the costs that we incur with maintaining the kiosks and doing park mobile and making parking a little bit easier, there's a cost associated with that. You know, we could go back to meters. And so like, that, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what I, what I'm hearing is a little bit more of the conversation to be had. And it's an exercise we're happy to go through, if that's, if that's what we're looking for.
I mean, in fairness, it's one-seventh of the people up here that are looking for that conversation. I don't know how everybody else feels. But I mean, at the end of the day, like, if you had to say, what percentage of GMV is our current, like, operational spend?
GMV?
What percentage of our, like, revenue is our operational spend? And when was the last time we decreased it as a percentage of revenue? Those are the questions that I get asked a lot, right? And I think that's the point. Like, I love what we're doing here, but at the same time, if every year we're increasing budget, we're just increasing over time. And we have to look at it, I think, as a, as a what's, like, where are the gives and takes? It feels like a lot of gives and not a lot of takes. So, and maybe I'm wrong there, but that's the point of looking at it from three different angles, at least from my perspective. So it's only one of us up here that's pushing these buttons, and I hate to beat it up, but at the end of the day, you know, if everybody else doesn't want to see it that way, you know, they don't have to. I think just from my personal point of view- I think just from my personal point of view, I think that's usually the way I like to look at financial statements, at least.
Well, sorry. Couldn't, and this is the point of getting this economic developer and manager in here. They could help get more revenue to the township. So, like, that next, I mean, that line item, it's not like other ones, it's a possibility.
Right, so that's the net trade-off. Does that then take our budget to a lower percentage of our revenue? Probably. But it doesn't decrease the taxes over time. So, you're not saying, okay, well, we're paying for it now out of tax money, and then when they start making us money, we're going to lower taxes. That, that doesn't happen, at least in my experience. So, you're taxing now, and then you're making the money back. We're just continuing to snowball and put it back on the community to cover the cost. I think my gut says this is the right thing to do for Radnor. I think my question is, like, what are we, what are we trading for it? And are we willing to trade anything for it? Sorry, we don't have to keep going.
No, I just think that there is an increase in costs of the township, cost of living. I mean, it happens to everybody every year. And it never goes back down, frankly. I mean, every once in a while, you get a little bit. But, you know, we're not the school district who has a big increase every year, you know, that's just built into their budget. We could build it into ours at a small rate, but we've chosen not to do that in hopes that we can push forward some of these initiatives to bring things back. And I think this economic development person really is one of those initiatives. It's up there with solar panels, in my mind.
I agree.
But I still don't know that there isn't something else. I mean, I think, you know, you're right. You see that scene from Dave where the, he asks his best friend, you know, the friend, the accountant, to cut down the financial budget of the United States, and, and he does it. You know, he slices this off here and that there. So, it's worth doing, it's just.
Nobody likes to decrease budget, right? Like, because that costs things, right? And I agree with that. I think that there are probably trade-offs somewhere, even at a small percentage. If we cut that in half, you're looking at a lower millage increase. I'm not saying zero, I'm just saying that, like, there's probably places that we could trim. And suggesting that maybe we just try to take a look. I haven't, you know, I haven't done that. I'm sure you probably have done that a lot. But at the end of the day, from my perspective, when you see, I mean, did we increase the budget last year? Did we increase it the year before that? No? Did it stay flat? Was that because of COVID? Two years?
When the county increased the assessment, it was painful for everybody, so we didn't. And then for COVID, we didn't. So, we are, yes, we are not a.
Outside of those two incidents, we've probably increased the budget year over year, pretty much every year.
No.
No? Oh, we've held it, okay.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking at there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and usually the increases were tied to something very specific.
You know, one option that I always throw out, if we are going to increase services and increase millage, there's 9 million in the general reserve fund that we could draw from and use. I still think that's a viable option. It doesn't get a lot of support on the board, but instead of going out to the community and, you know, showing them another tax increase, I think it's a worthwhile discussion to have.
That's interesting, or even at least a stopgap until we start to see the returns from the investments that we made, especially with an economic community manager.
And, Bill, where are we on that fund? And how close are we to our required, I mean, aren't we required to keep a certain amount in?
Yeah, so it's our own policy.
Can you walk us through a little bit about that? Because it's, you know, that could be an option.
Yeah, and we, you know, we run usually around 10 million is where we've ended. Some years better than others. Don't get too excited about our year-to-date number. That's going to go down before the end of the year because we collect all of our revenue in the first six months of the year. So, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's an option. I, you know, it's interesting, we just went through the bond issuance, and as part of that, you get, you know, they have to be rated by one of the agencies. So, the township has always used Moody's, and that, we'll share that report. It's because, from their perspective, a couple of things hold, well, I don't want to say it in a negative light. We're AA1, so we're one step off from AAA. So, we are in a fantastic spot. That rate was reaffirmed by Moody's, suggesting that we are in a fantastic spot, and they're very comfortable rating our bonds that way. But when they, they list the things that, the risks ahead of, are facing the township, you know, one of them is, you know, the cash reserves aren't enough. They'd like to see a larger cash reserve based on the percentage of business taxes we rely on to the overall cost of the operation. So, that then leads back into the importance and the weight that the real estate tax plays into the balance of all three of the, our funding mechanisms. Because the real estate taxes are so reliable, you know, the rating agencies want to see those, being a larger percentage of our operating revenue. We don't, we don't do that. We haven't, in the 14 years I've been here. We have always relied heavily, as much as we can, on business taxes, and that carries the risk. And Moody's calls us out on that. But then that also, because of that risk and reliance on the business taxes, it mandates that we keep a large amount in our reserve. And that's where that 10 million comes from. And we saw from 19 to 20, a $4 million reduction in revenues in one year. So, I mean, it can happen, and it can happen just that fast. So, I mean, that's where the cash reserves come in, and they have their importance there. They also generate a significant amount of interest revenue, especially in the last two years. Prior to that, not so much, but in a more normal operating economy where interest rates are strong enough that you draw some return on them, there is a benefit to having that there to produce some revenue for the township. But that, yeah, I mean, those are, yeah, I mean, it's all part of the conversation, not all of which we're going to be able to dissect tonight. But I'm happy to get into those, those elements.
So, I, I think it would be a, a good exercise, you know, as James has been saying, is, you know, sort of having some conversations about a little deeper dive, and then, you know, messing around with that millage rate to see if we can, you know, even if it's just, even if it's just the cost of the economic development role to come out of the fund, we're not, you know, we're not depleting it, we're at a little bit of an excess there. So, just sort of playing around with it, that if we did less of a millage increase and tap just a little bit out of the fund, we might get to a number that's more palatable. Throwing it out there.
Just so I'm reading it right, the fund policy is 25% of expenditures, and according to your sheet, we have a little over 500,000 that we could look at and still be above the 25%.
Yeah, if, if we end 2024 as exactly as we budgeted. So, yeah.
How close are you, I know you said ignore that projection, but how close is a realistic projection that we will end?
Well, I think the 2024 full-year budget is probably a good number to, to look at. So, that, the 10,776, which is pretty, pretty much in line with 2025. Look, well, so, for, for discussion purposes, to get us to a budget, why don't we, if the board's okay with it, we'll just set millage at 0%, we'll keep it the same. And then in 2025, we'll get into it. We'll start dissecting our departments, we'll come in with, you know, our service offerings and what, you know, what don't we want to see? What do we like? What do we want to invest in? What do we want to divest in? And get into it.
So, all in that we've discussed tonight, including these overage, right? How far away are, would we be if we keep it at the, with no millage increase? No, I mean, keeping those guys in, the ones that we've sort of approved?
Yeah, I understand what you're asking.
What's the delta? Like, how far away are we from, you know, including the, the library, these increases?
You know, I'm not sure I would increase the other organizations either. If we're going to say, you know, we're tightening our belt, and this is what we're going to do for a year and see, maybe the library and the senior center and the art thing don't get any more money, or don't get more money. I'm not saying cut them off, I'm just saying, don't give them increases.
So, the only thing holding in there above would be the new roles?
So, you're asking how far off? So, I'm just, I'm zeroing out. So, about 307,000. Now, if we start putting those stuff, those positions back in, it's going to be closer to a half a million.
So, right now, if we were to, at the 300, split the baby, you get the 150 for the new economic development person out of the fund, and you only rate, we only need 150 in the, in the deficit. What would that millage rate require?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what the, okay, that was without.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah, so it's about five.
A little less, but yeah, close.
Well, we'll do that. To keep the conversation moving forward, we'll set the millage rate for next year at the same amount it is for this year, and then.
I'm a little hesitant to go that.
Present what that might look like at the next meeting.
If it's just for demonstration purposes, but I don't think we can hold a flat budget. I don't think we can not.
Well, what we'll come back with at the next meeting is how we balance that. Because I'm, I don't, I don't want to present a budget that, that shows a $470,000 deficit. So, we would, we would figure out how to get that number to zero by coming up with a list of things that we're going to pull back on.
Bill, are we going to issue any, thinking about, we're going to issue any bonds next year?
Not from the general fund. The only bonds I could imagine that are part of the conversation right now would be anything more on stormwater.
And Moody's wants us to have how much in reserve?
It's a ratio. And I don't have it memorized.
Do you, do you know what it's cost us not being a AAA? In other words, we're doing this, we're cutting this back, but we're going to end up paying more on bonds. So, we're hurting ourselves.
Yeah, we've, we've asked that question before in the past. The, the difference between AA1 and AAA on any given day is going to change. It's not, it's not that dramatic, to be perfectly honest. It's not going to save us significantly, significant amounts of money on the debt side. What it might do is bring an investor, an additional investor or two to the table, which might generate better rates. The more, the more functional or beneficial element to the Moody's report is identifying from a financial perspective where our strengths and weaknesses are at. Not so much in how much we might save by being AAA, but based on their analysis of our financial situation, what are things that we should be paying attention to? And the fund balance and revenue makeup as a percentage to our, our operating costs are two of the biggies. And I, yeah, I, would we?
What?
Yeah, we'll, we'll survive. If we didn't, if we spent the cash down and we run into a recession, you know, what ends up happening, and this happened when I first started here back in 2010 and 11, is the township did not have a large cash reserve, business taxes backed up by the same amount as we did at COVID, around 4 million, and we ended up putting an 11% tax increase in, just so we can maintain the budget.
Right, so.
So, at the worst time for people to be spending more money on taxes is when we had to ask them for more taxes. So, that's where the, the relationship between the cash reserves and our revenue makeup are important. I think we did 11% one year and then nine the next. It was, there were two tough years. And then zeros for like four years.
Any further commissioner comment? Public comment?
Sarah Pelling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I'm no mathematician, so I wonder if it isn't time to ask a little bit more of the residents who live in Radnor Township that could lower some of our costs. I specifically refer to trash, the recycling, and the gathering of the leaves in the fall. We shouldn't be raking a good first of the leaves. We should not be raking our properties clean environmentally. And I don't know how much we spend to collect all those leaves and to transport them. I also know that it's really not very good for a skunk hollow because the stuff that leaks out of the leaves is getting into the Little Darby Creek. So, I wonder what it would be to ask the residents, rather than cutting out a service, to ask them to step to the bar a little bit more. Now, I don't know whether they still do it, because I don't live in Lower Merion, but in Lower Merion Township, at some point in the recent past, you got to put out two trash cans. And if you put out three or four, you paid for it. So, they had computers in the trash trucks, and they would just mark off. This also helps with climate change. So, I'm just wondering if this isn't an idea, rather than, oh, we're going to cut this service, or we're going to cut this salary. We ask a little bit more of the residents, the township. Because right now, I watch the recycling, and it is totally out of control. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Laura Lucre, Ward 4. I want to just actually go on top of the same thing that Sarah just said. I mean, primarily, public works, really, that is where you want to look at that particular mulching program. Are we making any money on it? How much does it cost? Because taking the leaves out of our yards is ridiculous. We are taking the gold away. And most people, if they wanted to, they can have their landscaper do it. But I don't understand the, the business of how our mulching division works. So, maybe we make money on it, I don't know. We have a lot of capital equipment that we have to use in order to do this program. So, it's, I mean, I, I use the, not the leaf pickup, but I use the other, I forget what you call it, but, you know, the yard, yard waste. And I, I mean, that is a huge asset for me. I mean, I probably put out five to 10 bales every two weeks of things. I don't know, I think we need to look and see how much we're spending on it. And if so, charge us. I know most townships do. I'm, are, not townships, but where I come from, we would have to buy a sticker to put on our bags. We'd have to buy a sticker to put on our twine pickups. Those stickers cost money, the bags cost money. I don't know. Not something I think I want to spend money on, but, I mean, if we're trying to cut, those are the areas. I don't want to cut services that are important and for safety and anything like that, but, anyway. Also, remember, Radnor residents feel entitled, and they don't want to spend a lot of money. We get so much here, we, we want so much. We should be starting to pay for it, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one. Mr. White, do you have what you need?
Yes, so we will come back at the next meeting with an ordinance that keeps the millage the same, along with a discussion on how we're going to accomplish that.
Thank you. Moving on, reports of board liaisons? Anyone?
I will just, I am the liaison of the Radnor Fire Company. They are in probably the ending days of a.
They are in probably the ending days of a fundraising campaign for their ambulance services. So if you are so inclined, go to the website, make a contribution. They will take money all year round, but it is a campaign season, so, thanks.
And they fundraise separately from the fire? Because I always get two different envelopes.
So, yes, there are two campaigns every year, one for fire and one for ambulance. Not as, you all know, the ambulance services is for every Radnor resident, but not every resident is supported by fire at Radnor Fire Company. So they do them separately. You can give to either, and you can give all year round, but please give.
All right. No business? We'll get another public in a second, okay? Old business? Do you want to mention the signs?
Yeah, oops, I just hit something weird. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on. Some residents have brought it to my attention that there are lingering political signs. Our ordinance allows 10 days, which we're in that space, 10 days to kind of take down political signs driving around the community. I think both parties are represented with the signs still up. So if you have political signs in your yard, I think Friday is the deadline for removing those. So thanks for everyone who got really excited about this election. You know, signs are great during the campaign season, but let's clean up our streets. Thank you.
Any other old business? Seeing none? Final public participation?
This has to do with future probably budgets that are going to be coming down. We noticed when Bill put up, part of the comprehensive plan is hopefully to have, and the park, or public works, is to have somebody being able to do the maintenance or putting together a maintenance program and overseeing it for all of our 300, 400-plus acres of land that we own. And so if we're having an issue right now with trying to get an asset for basically our Wayne business, we're going to have another issue trying to rectify how we're going to maintain our open space and how we're going to be able to have somebody do something. Because as it is right now, it's a broken system, and things aren't, things are getting only band-aided. And it's only going to get worse with invasive vines taking down, you know, trees dying. We're going to have to remove those, the cost of that, understanding. If you look at the comprehensive plan and what it was asking, what we were shown tonight, it is expensive, what that comp plan is asking for us to start to look at. And we need to learn how to, or figure out how to budget for that. So if we can't figure it out now with what we're doing, we're going to be, we're going to just keep on slipping down, back. So somewhere, we're going to have to say, we got to step up and make some choices and make some people pay. So I don't know, it's just something you're going to have to really look at. Because it hasn't been looked at for many years. And I think we need to take some consideration of, you know, if this is hard for us to do it for, just for our business association, how are we going to do it for our environment? So, for next year, because that's really where the goal is, is to take the next step. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Seconded, all in favor? Aye.